Okay, yeah.
It's a hundred and six miles to Chicago.
Okay, yeah.
We got a full tank of gas, half a pack of cigarettes, it's dark, and we're wearing sunglasses. Hit it.
Welcome to the goddamn podcast with Drew and TJ. Let's get this goddamn thing started. You're goddamn right.
Alright, what's up everybody? Welcome to another goddamn Tuesday night. Grant is joining Dark Matter and myself tonight. Should be a lot of fun. I will put it out there right now that I am, uh, the, the last few days for me have been like a, like an emotional roller coaster. I am, uh, I'm like all kinds of depressed and having like anxiety issues and shit right now, so. I'll apologize for that right now if I don't, if I seem kind of out of it or whatever. Um, uh, I did pretty well last night. Dark Matter and I were on Drunken Peasants and that was, uh, that was a lot of fun. But, uh, you know, it, it takes some effort to kinda, I don't know, be entertaining when you, when you don't feel it, you know what I mean? So I'm just putting that out there for you guys and, and big thanks to Grant for joining us kinda last minute. To, uh, to fill in any holes if, if I, you know, if I don't feel extremely talkative or whatever. But who knows, I might take this as an opportunity like I did last night and just kind of focus on something else other than feeling like shit. So anyway, um, you know, not to bring everything down, I just wanna put that out there if I'm like, you know, coming off as low energy, uh, quite honestly, I almost just canceled the show tonight. Cause I really, I'm just not, um, just not, not feeling great. Like ironically, starting to get over, you know, COVID and physically feeling better, but now like mentally like, I've been in a fog for fricking days now, so. Really, uh, just, just a weird situation. I'm not gonna get into any details or anything like that. That's not what this podcast is for, um, but I'm, I'm just putting it out there if I'm coming off as low energy, so. Nothing, uh, you know. I don't, I just, I don't, I don't want people to be like, what the fuck is wrong with TJ? I'll just put it out there right from the beginning that I feel like shit. Anyway, um, thank you guys very much for joining us anyway. It's gonna be a fun show. I got a lot of good material and even if I'm not talking, if these two are gonna have a lot of fun with this shit.
You know, you said, I believe you said you were gonna give me holes to fill? Is that right?
Yeah, you, you'll have plenty of holes to fill, Dark Matter.
Okay, good, 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 good.
Anyway, a big salute to the, uh, the supporters, the patron army. We, we fucking love you guys. Uh, you are goddamn fantastic and, uh, we really appreciate your support. Please, uh, keep it coming. Uh, it's actually the last day of the month. Usually we kinda take a hit on our patron support as the month rolls over. So, uh, if you've been holding off or thinking about it or wanna get in on all those, uh, like over a hundred patron shows, you'll have access to at a mere five bucks a month. Jump in on that shit. The link is in the, um, description. It's patreon.com slash goddamn. Uh, of course, subscribe, um, I'm, subscribe star, we're kind of sticking, you know, staying away from right now, uh, which is probably for the best, uh, and Streamlabs is open and will remain open. Uh, if you get those in there, I will, if, if I don't notice them, please let me know, cause I'm, I'm distracted running the show and trying to, you know, watch multiple screens here. So if I miss your Streamlabs, please don't hate me. I will go back and play it and read it. Um, but I will try and play them live. Uh, I've got, I've got the window open as close to the, you know, the window I'm constantly looking at, uh, as possible, so that I, I try and pick up on it when it, when one happens.
Um, Joe, Joe Black, Drew is, we're still cool with Drew and everything. It's just he had to, he had other things he was doing in life at the time.
His, uh, you know, he's, he's got married, bought a house, he's working at a job where he has, like the ti- it was really fucking with his schedule to do this podcast at the, in this timeframe, cause this has always been the timeframe for this podcast. And, uh, he was having to wake up at like, you know, three thirty in the morning or whatever, after doing this podcast till, till past, you know, I guess midnight for his time. But that, that's rough. That's rough to do it that way. And it's a little easier, I guess, when you're like, you know, single in, in an apartment. Or whatever, but, um, yeah, uh, nothing but love for Drew. Drew will be back on the show, I guarantee it at some point. I mean, I'm, I'm letting him enjoy his, his, uh, Tuesday nights off for the time being, but I promise you I'll drag his ass back in here one night. And, uh, a few nights, it'll be a lot of fun. Uh, Drew likes to have, have fun just like the rest of us. He'll wanna get in here and, and talk some shit and tell us how wrong we all are.
Hey, you know, uh, that reminds me with Drew not being around anymore. You, you know, you remember in Game of Thrones, how Daenerys Targaryen, the, the mother of dragons, she had all these names? Breaker of Chains, you know, Queen of the Great Grassy, all those names and stuff. I'd go on for five minutes, right? I'm thinking we should change the intro. Yeah, we should change the intro so that I have, like, that's my intro and then with TJ.
Dude, alright.
Right?
And what I need is for somebody that's very good at writing things like that to come up with.
Dark Matter 2520, conqueror of beautiful women, you know, I, I can come up with them right off the bat.
But, but I need someone that'll actually make it like funny, you know what I mean? Like fricking, uh, you know, Slayer of Hair. You know? Whatever, whatever the, the, uh, somebody can write it out, have, have it be like ten seconds long. I'll throw it in there. I need to redo the intro. I apologize. I've not, uh, not done that. It still says Drew in there, but whatever. It's a fantastic fucking intro. It's gonna be a pain in the ass to fucking redo it.
I'm just kidding around.
It's, it's unfortunate because I'm gonna have to like try and bother Truth Search to just say, "Dark Matter." Just, just so I could fucking clip that in there somewhere, which is so much effort. Um, anyway, uh,
I'll be sure and quit right after the new intro goes in play.
Uh, I did wanna, uh, say that anybody that wanted to check out Dark Matter and myself on Drunken Peasants last night, it was a lot of fun. I'll put the link in the, in the chat right now. And then, uh, if you are watching after the fact and, or the chat is removed for whatever reason, just search it up. It's, uh, episode nine twenty-four? It's the latest episode. It was just last night. Uh, it was a lot of fun. It always is with those guys. Ben and Billy are, are, uh, they're fun guys. It was, uh, always a fun episode. You, you always feel at home over there.
Yeah, those are funny dudes.
Yeah, yeah, like it's, they're, they're, they're on our level. I like them. Anyway, Grant, what the fuck you been up to, man?
Absolutely nothing.
Absolutely nothing?
Absolutely nothing. Nothing, nothing spectacular. I'm a, I'm a boring guy. I'm not on your level.
Oh dude, yeah, trust me. My life, my life is, uh, is not that exciting. I just, I'm, just have way too fucking much going on. Like it's, it's nothing but.
Yeah, that, that's.
It's busy work, bro.
Yeah, that, that's what I have here. I got a lot of shit going on, but it, I've, that's been my life for so long now that it's not exciting anymore. It's just, do this, do this, do this. Alright, go to bed. Get up, go to work, do this, let's do this, go to bed.
I feel you on that shit, man. It gets, uh, you know, the, the routine can get, uh, monotonous to say the fucking.
Yes, yes. That's the perfect word for it.
And, and I, uh, it's not only that, but when I go to work, I do prep work. So it's literally monotonous, like mind-numbingly monotonous work when I go to work on top of the regular day-to-day. And I mean, you know, whatever, that's, that's life and that's the price of living in like today's, uh, society. Where, you know, that's, that's just kinda how it fucking works, but man.
Can you at least like listen to stuff on earbuds?
Oh, at work? I, I would quit if I couldn't.
Ah, okay.
It's literally the only thing that keeps me going is that I fucking pop in one earbud and, and rock out to whatever the fuck is, and I use, I still use an MP3 player. Because, well, the, the thing is, the thing is that my fucking phone will not hold a charge while I'm playing music and shit all day. And, and I'm there for like thirteen hour shifts sometimes. So I need something that holds a charge for thirteen fucking hours. And I have just a little SanDisk clip, like twenty dollar fucking thing, and it holds, it's eight gigs built in, plus you can expand it with the card and it is just, so I basically have cards full of music. And I just change out the cards and it's, uh, yeah, I would not do that job. If I, if they told me like, okay, no more, no more of that, I'd be like, okay, here's my two weeks.
Can you, uh, this, this is for both of you. Can you remember a time where we had jobs that we had to do something monotonous all day and all you could do was just like think to yourself all fucking day? Cause you had no music.
Oh, it happens. It happens. Like I've, I've gone into work and my earbuds, uh, wouldn't work. And I'm like, well, what the fuck are you gonna do now? I don't have a backup with me or anything. I've gone and I've forgotten it on the charger. And I'm like, fuck, this is gonna be like, luckily I live pretty close to home and my, like, I've been at that place for so long that I'll literally just tell them like, yo, I have, and they know me. They know that like, and they know I listen to metal and they know I work at a pace that is like according to what I listen to and they can freaking, they're like, no, 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 go get your music, bro. Cause they know it shaves like an hour off the day, the, the extra pace that I pick up just listening to like fricking, I listen to Death Clock and fucking all kinds of weird shit at work. It's fantastic. Yeah, it's, it's one of the only things that keeps me going there. That and it being very close to my house. It takes a certain kinda person. Most people like don't make it very long doing that. They're like, this is mind-numbing, but for me, I'm, I am, I'm just thinking about other things. It's all muscle memory as far as the actual work goes. And I'm just.
Yeah, I've, I've had jobs like that early on, you know, it, where you couldn't do, you know, listen to shit and, and, or, you know, do other things and it makes me like really grateful for what I do now where I can basically do what I wanna do. And like if I, you know, if I have an idea for a video, I can just work on that and.
Yeah. Did, did, did I say I live close to home? I meant I work close, close to my house. Like I, I'm not that far from. Anyway, you guys know what I fucking mean, goddammit. Quote me while I'm feeling like shit.
That's, that's usually my job in the chat.
Yeah, goddammit. I, Dark Matter, can you say something real quick?
Something, testing, one, two, three.
It's, it's staying on Grant on my Skype, so I might actually just be able to fucking get his video here. Which would be.
What do you mean staying on me?
Like it's usually it switches between the.
No, it's my fan probably.
Oh, well, there you go.
It's probably giving just enough noise.
A hack, it's a hack around it.
That's how to get around Skype by a fan. Let me, uh, I guess get rid of, I'll put this above and this is the one I was gonna get.
Just an, just another case of me being hounded by a fan. It happens often, you know?
See, this is why you bring up the, my video just to see the, the face from all.
Yeah. You, you wanna see the kinda stuff Dark Matter sends me?
What?
I don't, dude, you sent, this is gonna get us in trouble probably.
Oh, no.
But, uh, yeah, I can't, I can't fucking help myself. Here we go. It's called, I think I'm in love with my bread ma- machine. Dark Matter. Why are you sending me this kinda content?
It's for, it's about, it's, it's a culinary video. You're in the culinary business. I thought you'd appreciate it. What it? Well, what's wrong with it? My god, TJ. I don't understand what your issue with it is.
We're talking about, what do you do at work? This guy stares at this thing. Gets paid. Oh yeah. I wonder how much dough he makes? How many hours do you work at this job before you just need it? Bam, where, where you at?
If he, if he ever gets in an argument with a coworker, does he have to turn the other cheek?
I, I don't really think that joke twerked.
Jesus fucking Christ. Dude. This is, this video playing on fucking, on repeat is killing me.
Yeah, it's, it's.
This is, are we gonna get fucking YouTube in tr- like YouTube, we're gonna convince them that this is fucking a dough kneading machine?
Yeah, I, I could see you writing the response now, guys, YouTube, it's, it's, it's bread. Believe it or not, it's fucking bread.
You heard what they did, uh, what was it? Copper Cabbie or whatever the fuck his name is?
Uh, Copper Cab.
Copper Cab, yeah, like they fucking got rid of it. Here, let me get this off the screen before we get fucking banned. They, uh, they removed his channel. And then, um, after like all kinds of shitstorm on Twitter, they put it, they're, they're just like, oops, we put it back. Like everything's fine now, like they wouldn't have done shit for a smaller person or if there would, hadn't have been a shitstorm, you know what I mean? Like for this channel, it would have just been gone.
Why did they? I mean, did they give an explanation?
No, they said it was a mistake. They said, uh, apparently he got like a stri- an email for a strike and then it was, his channel was terminated like within seconds of each other.
That's weird. He already has strikes or something?
I, I think it was his first strike, first strike and then channel termination. And like, and it's, it's funny cause YouTube just responds with bots. They look for keywords and it responds with bots. There's nobody actually doing anything over at that fucking place. And they'll use COVID as an excuse, but they sucked before too. So whatever, fuck YouTube. Seriously though. Uh, let's see, let's, uh, let's feel the zen.
Does the video have a very low frame rate for you as well?
Does have, that has a low frame rate for you?
Yeah. Like, just like a couple frames a second.
Really bad?
Notice in my video is glitching too, like the video of me, but that.
Okay, let me, um.
Cause you know, you gotta get me correct before everything else.
Sure, yeah. I'm, I'm almost thinking about fucking not having you on. Is it, is it smooth for everybody watching?
I mean, it could be just me.
No, if not, if, not if Dark Matter says it's for him too. God knows there's probably fucking like seven devices seeping off the internet on, in this house right now.
Steven James says you're alright.
Okay. I guess.
And corrected, and corrected you with Y-O-U-R.
Wait. Wait, he was.
He was right the first time.
Yeah, oh well. Okay, as long, as long as it looks good for you guys, I'm.
No, wait a minute. No, he, no, he corrected his third U-R.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, that makes sense. We'll give you credit, sir. Hey, look, man, I'm usually not like a grammar Nazi, right? But except in certain situations, I think I've talked about it before. Like if, if you're telling, no, if you're telling me like how to fix the economy, but you don't know the difference between there, there and there. Like maybe then I point out that like, hey, you don't, you can't even master simple grammar. Uh, probably you don't know that what's best for the fucking economy. Like if, if it's just a simple like, you know, or if they're like, you're dumb and they use the wrong U-R, like, don't, don't do that.
I, I stumbled into this viper's nest of literature snobs where, uh, oh, it's, it's an account. It's about, it was a Twitter account about publishing and I ended up in one of his tweets because he was talking about the Bible clinglers were right all along and blah, blah, blah. So, you know, I'm attracted to the religious tweets and I got into a half-ass theological debate, which wasn't even a really debate because they wouldn't even, he wouldn't even, I wanna say elucidate what the fuck he was talking about them being right about. But because I used the word elucidate, they thought that, that, oh, that means I'm a douchebag. You know, like I, cause I didn't say elaborate.
All, all.
Yeah, so, so they, all these, all these literature snobs start replying to me about how I used the, I may have used the word correctly, but it still makes me sound like a wanker and blah, blah, blah. And you can tell that I'm a leftist snob. I used elucidate and their, their grammar is fucking atrocious. Usually I don't go after people's grammar, you know, it's just Twitter, it's just tweets, whatever, you know, back and forth. It doesn't have to be formal. But when you're fucking talking about, you know, the proper way to write, you know, at least make sure your fucking grammar is on point.
Well, see, that's the thing, you, you, you said a word they didn't know. That's why I got all shitty about it.
Maybe, I mean.
Yeah, if they have to take the time.
That's, that's usually what happens when, when somebody gets a word that they, first off, they can't read it and then second off, they're not gonna know what it means. That's when they get pissed off. They wanna try to hit you at other things.
Yeah, like if someone's mad that you're using fucking, you know, synonyms. Like, come the fuck on, man.
Well, it's like, they assume that I'm trying to impress or something when I just, just really a word that just came right off the top of my head. Because I mean, I do a lot of fucking writing. I'm always thinking of synonyms.
Having a vocabulary is, is intimidating to some people, you know? And, uh, you know, some, some people just can't handle it. They, they're like, you know, I is dumb, I was gonna be dumb, no matter how much you try and learn me. And, uh, I'll be mad at you and call you an elitist. And what, you, you, you probably went to college, like that's a fucking huge insult or some shit. You know what I mean? People are, people are fucking stupid. Alright, did, you guys didn't catch this? Let's see if it plays better this time.
It was like a, it's like a slideshow.
Is it working now? No?
Nah, it's a slideshow.
It's better.
Like I, the only reason I know what happens is cause I saw an image of one, one of these hitting his face. And, and I'm saying a sound accompanying, accompanying it.
I'm almost wondering if I should, uh, if I should change some settings here. I'm wondering if it's, uh, the fact that I have Grant. Cause I have multiple fucking screen grabs going on. I know, I don't wanna blame you, buddy. I don't wanna. Let's see if it, uh, see if it changes anything.
Instead of Grant, just put a picture of Jack Sparrow up.
That's pretty close. Crack Sparrow.
But you have heard of me.
Alright, but does that, that, did it fix anything? No?
No.
No, it's still chopping.
Yeah, it's not me.
Yay, it's not Grant.
It's your shit.
Yeah, it's probably. The good news is I have plenty of stuff that we can do with, uh, as long as the audio is smooth. Keanu, please, it's different when Drew was.
Probably the cat. It's probably the cat.
Yeah, damn. I actually took apart this PC and cleaned it not too long ago because I wanted it. I knew like how much fucking cat hair and shit had made its way in there. And, uh, there, there was quite a bit, but it cleaned up nicely and I was hoping that it would start running a little bit more smoothly. I think I just have too much going on, uh, right now for this, this old machine. Uh, let's see, we'll play something that's more audio related here. Let's get rid of this.
One, one of these days, Keanu is gonna go full John Wick on your ass.
I invite.
You see a flying back kick go across the screen.
Dude, he gets, he gets angry, like if you, you know, he wants petting or whatever and you stop, like the claws come out and he'll grab your hand. He's a spoiled little fuck. Alright, um, alright, let's do, god, there's a lot of them. Uh, let's do some, some city council ones.
City councils and school board meetings just turned, all of a sudden turned into an absolute clusterfuck.
This guy right here is, uh, is a bit of a handful.
...of your back and they should be begging you to do the right thing. You're about to open a pit of hell. You do not get a vaccine passport put on us. You know, as the population who's in control, you know that the people who are the politicians, once you get a power, you will never relinquish it. Do you think that the four feet of marble that holds you above, high in this chamber, will help you from the fate of humanity which you are unleashing?
Are you guys, there's cheers for this. Cheers.
You know what? The, the problem is, is I, I guess in recent days, uh, I guess the public has found out that these are somewhat public. So everybody can go to them and, uh, I can see in the future, we're not gonna have anybody sitting in seats for public office. Nobody's gonna wanna deal with that, you know, every other week. Like I am not running for this shit. I'm not dealing with this fucking guy.
And, oh yeah.
Then what if these guys end up in the seats?
Oh, Jesus.
There's enough of them. Sadly.
There are, yeah.
There are enough of these fucking crazy assholes out there.
Hey, uh, Sernian, he's not a customer of mine, okay? Knock it off.
Uh-oh. Well, um, I, I, I don't know. I will say that, that, uh, I helped Drew pick hit the machine that, that, uh, that he was using to run the podcast and we picked it specifically, uh, to, you know, stream better. And, uh, if, it was, wasn't cheap. But i- it might be around that time for me to fucking upgrade. I've had this thing for fucking years and years and it wasn't so like, wasn't so bad when I wasn't streaming. But now, now it's kind of a, I need to do something. And it probably doesn't help that I've got the fucking hundred-foot ethernet cable.
Nah, that sucks.
It slows it way fucked out.
The long, yeah.
It's a Cat 7, which is pretty good, but it's not good enough to like do this full-blown streaming. It's just too much for this poor little machine.
The problem with, the problem right now is there's a run on GPUs, so there's shortages everywhere.
Dude, you're talking to a guy that I lost a hubcap, went on eBay to buy a replacement, saw how much they were, how expensive they were, and I sold the other three. Dude, I, I am.
Just plastique dip the wheels.
Dude, I, I, I just bought some aftermarket ones. It was the fact that they were actual Nissan hubcaps that, like even the beat up ones were like forty, they'd sell for forty-five bucks. Like it was ridiculous. That's, I'm not paying that much for a fucking hubcap, sorry. I bought some aftermarket ones for like seventeen bucks for the set. And if I lost one, I didn't give a shit. Yeah, that was whatever. That, now I've got a car with actual wheels on it and not fucking steelies, so. Yay. It's a, it's such a beater still. It's such, you, I, you thought I was, wasn't it you, Grant? You thought I was kidding about having the Deadpool fucking decal on the front?
Yes.
I just don't get it.
That's, everything else you said about it, I was like, yeah, that's believable, but the Deadpool sticker doing this shit, no, like, no, he's not twenty. He's, he's, there's no way.
No, I, I still act like it. I'm terrible. It's, it's a fucking total beater. Look at my fucking hair for Christ's sake. I'm, I'm trying to compensate for being old. Let's all be honest. At least I don't have fucking dreads like this fool.
Just look at it this way. All three of us are in our forties.
Listen. Dude, the, the, this is about a mask mandate and this man is fucking spreading spit like fucking fifty feet right now.
How do, how do they not see like, like this is, like, just, just a few years ago, twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen? I mean, they were making fun of college kids screaming like this, right? And, and they just, that's them now. Now they're just totally unhinged.
Steven James, uh, hit me up, uh, like email me or whatever about that if you want. Like I would love, love to try something to up, uh, what I can do for this computer in the meantime while I, uh, cause you know me, I'll shop around for a month or two before I find something I really want. I usually get fucking rebuilt or refurbished machines. Um, it's just easy that way. You can get a, uh, something pretty decent for half the price. What was it? Testament?
Mayhem.
Mayhem, alright.
Yeah, he is going full WWE.
Oh yeah.
Isn't he?
Yeah, he is.
You know what? This this brings us something that happened it just in my little, uh, my little group of neighbors here. Uh, right before, uh, school started for the kids, um, they put in a, you know, a hundred percent mask. Mandate for the for basically all the public schools in the county and. We have a we have a small little like Facebook messenger group. There's like maybe twelve of us in there. And one person's like, as long as they're doing that, my children aren't going to go. And if there's enough of us, they'll they'll drop in, uh, they'll drop in a certain percentage in open enrollment or or whatever. And I'm like, okay, what has it dropped since the mask mandate? And they were like, well, it dropped seven percent. I'm like, seven percent? You make this big fucking fuss, seven percent, and then you type to us. Like you're some big badass cuz you pulled your kids out of school like you're you're standing up for something. It's 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 like, um. For some reason, this shit has gotten people thinking that. Vaccinations and mask wearing has gone against their personal freedoms somehow. Like, uh, I I don't get it. Like when people like with this guy yelling and shit, you know, he's he's thinking that he's accomplishing something right here. But what but as soon as he walks out the door, nobody's gonna give a shit about him.
In his mind, he's like Mel Gibson in The Patriot.
Or better yet, Braveheart. He's like, you know, the ma- the mask is the fucking blade. They stick up his ass and rip. Through his stomach while he yells freedom.
Yeah, I was about to say, yeah, that guy dies. He still dies.
Most dark matter has got the list going of conservative radio hosts and shit that have that have fucking been.
Oh, yeah.
Covid is a fucking joke and then now they're dead.
Yeah, the following people are actual radio hosts. Who died of Covid who are anti vax or anti mask. Dick Farrell, Phil Valentine, Mark Bernier. And Caleb Wallace are all right wing radio people, radio personalities who died of Covid. And then you have a uh, the anti maskers and anti vaxers, David Parker, Leslie Lawrence and Scott Apley. Stephen Harmon, Presley Stutz, Herman Cain, Kurt Carpenter, Geraldine Mount, Sidney Joe Anson, Jimmy DeYoung. All these people died of Covid.
Jesus Christ.
Well, if these same people didn't act a fucking ass when this whole thing first started. And actually just just followed along with it, it's gonna be over soon. We'd be past all this right now.
Yeah, other countries are doing much better.
Yeah, of course.
We have this weird thing. Other countries look and they're like, what? Why are I thought Americans were supposed to be like badasses and hardasses and tough. But they're they're fucking crying their eyes out over fucking little mask. Every no one else cares about it.
You know, I could I could think of other things that would be a slight against personal freedoms.
Uh, Steve Steven James, I suggest you go look up some of the the Facebook, like there's plenty of posts where they they put. The person's Facebook posts or or Twitter posts about how little they give a shit about Covid. And then how seriously they take it once they get it and then them asking for prayers and then the announcement that they're dead. Like it's it's almost fucking like a a a regular thing, the order in which, yeah, it's predictable in the order in which it goes there.
And that, you know, I had one thing I have to keep telling people is remember, nobody ever died of AIDS alone. Right? I mean, just you have to have a corne- comorbidity to die with AIDS. And it's always die with AIDS, never die of AIDS. Does that mean you want AIDS? Do you do you do you care about getting AIDS now? I mean.
Ask ask this guy in the dreads if he knew what the word comorbidity was before last year.
I love all these these, uh, brand new, you know, virologists and and.
Oh, yeah.
Their 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 expertise, uh, is it switches because they become experts on the economy. And then they're experts on medicine and then they're experts on, you know, they just they're they're just experts. They just know everything. You can just trust these dumb motherfuckers. By the way, I see Tyler in the chat. Uh, what's up, buddy? Love that motherfucker.
It's it's the same thing with Afghanistan now, like all of a sudden, there's just a lot of caring about. Everything going on there like.
About the Afghan people.
Some people care more than others, dark matter. We'll cover one of those a little later. But yeah, let's let's finish this guy off.
I did that a few a few times. I just as an experiment on a few major accounts. Bitching and moaning about Afghanistan. I, you know, would search their their the history of their Twitter accounts for. You know, the word Afghanistan and find that they only become recently have become very vocal about it, you know, in the last ten years.
Yeah, it 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 and it's always a chance to take a stab at Biden.
Yeah, you you have the same people that praised fucking, uh, Trump for it. Now chastising Biden for it like. Uh, you'll you'll hear people say like, well, Trump actually set it up perfectly and then Biden fucked it up. Like dude, set it up perfect like. Trump Trump literally set it up so that he would, even if it did go through, he would have to have won reelection to follow through with it and like. Everybody knows that nobody wants to hold Trump accountable. Holding Biden accountable like, let's do it. I don't give a fuck. No, I nobody's beholden to this motherfucker. No, there's no cult of personality behind Biden. And if there is, it's extremely small, especially compared to like the the Trump cult.
Hey, Jack, you you don't listen here, Mohawk. You don't know what you're what you're saying, okay?
Okay.
That was my first attempt at a Biden. I had.
Ja- Jack Mohawk? What the fuck? Li- li- listen here, angry red faced dread man. How how are you supposed to convince someone like this that they are incorrect?
You can't.
You can't. There's.
Hail Fauci in your face ten times. Like, look at this piece of fucking garbage.
Now, just imagine that half the people you deal with on Twitter are like this. They're screaming into their phones as they're talking to you.
I don't know. I'm just.
Ian Miles Chong is probably screaming when he says all this shit.
Oh, I mean, Ian Miles Chong is probably fucking crying furiously while he masturbates and types with the other fucking hand. The only attention that man gets is from fucking Twitter. Um, and it's, you know, it's funny and sad at the same time. How many more hail Fauces you think we're gonna get? I think you've got four already.
It doesn't stop.
The answer was zero.
Hey, do you understand, um, Steven, how somebody could not have a big cult? Following yet still win an election?
Yeah, it's called not liking the other guy so much. It's the same way. It the irony is the way Biden won in twenty twenty is the way that Trump won in twenty sixteen. Literally, they put up they put up a candidate so bad that the everyone's like, fuck it, I'll vote for the other guy. And that's exactly what happened. And the electoral results were fucking extremely similar.
Only Hillary actually won the popular vote.
Yeah, but not like and so did Biden, but Biden also won the electoral like it was.
Right, right.
It's just.
You said electoral. I I disregarded that. Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, uh, don't disregard what I have to say, you son of a bitch.
I gotta use a big word, douchebag.
Yeah, disregard. Just say oopsies. That's the way we say it in these circles. Say oopsies, I had a oopsies. Went poo poo in my diaper.
Every time like we mention the word Trump, if it immediately triggers you to be like. The le- election, launch mad bad, TDS. I mean, it's like.
No mean tweets.
Yeah, I mean, who really has the TDS here? I mean, when you simp for a dude that hard that we can't even mention his name and he was a US president. He's gonna get mentioned. Obama still gets mentioned. Bush still gets mentioned. Trump is still gonna get mentioned. He was the fucking president, okay?
And and the thing is that nobody simped for those those other presidents that you. Uh, had listed nearly as hard as the people simped for Trump. And I here's here's my theory. Here like people simped for Obama really hard. Don't get me wrong. That 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 fucking totally fucking happened. Um, but.
People simped for fucking Reagan fifteen years later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. But I guess my here's my theory is that, uh, the. Like Bush Senior wasn't like terribly bad, but was made to look like pretty bad by the Democrats. Clinton came in and the Republicans wanted to return the favor, so they got the like the Lewinsky thing going on. Then fucking Bush, yeah, W, George W got fucking like and he was such a fucking moron. He was such an easy target. That he got picked apart and made to look like the dumbest motherfucker ever. And so then the Republicans wanted to do the same to Obama. And pick him apart as much as the and it's like it's literally a tit for tat. To the point where it gets to these extremes where people like Trump are just like thought of as like the. Like, if you think Trump is the everyman, holy fuck, bro, like take a step back.
I'm sorry, but these this arguments about Trump doing better YouTube metrics than Biden. You know, PewDiePie dwarfs Trump's numbers. Does that mean PewDiePie could win the fucking presidential election?
Are we really worried about YouTube metrics?
Yeah, these guys, you know. I mean, I don't do so bad myself. I'm not gonna get anywhere near winning a fucking presidential election, okay?
Like, what are you talking about? It's like, oh, people. People come and thumbs down fucking Biden like White House videos on YouTube or whatever.
I we live we. We live in a like, uh, majority Christian country, right? Like, it's it's not even close. It's mostly Christians, right? But my videos are all in the ninetieth percentile up thumbs. Does that mean, oh, that means that America must be full of atheists? I mean, learn about how social media works.
I think I agree with General, uh, Fudge in the comments there. Uh, fuck all politicians. Like, there there are there are so very few that are actually worth half a shit that you it's it's okay to just say fuck them all. If it's such a tiny fucking fraction of them that are even worth their fucking salt, then then fuck them all. Like the system we have set up right now is is really embarrassing and it's a testament to like. How democracy can fail itself. Um, it it really is, uh, you know, a good idea turned fucking sour. The Nuremberg, dude, the Nuremberg code, guys.
What is the Nuremberg code?
He doesn't know. He brought a copy for them, though. You're but they're in violation of.
No, no, I'm I'm asking cuz the way you said it, it sounds like it's something that's going around. I don't I haven't come across it yet. Likes like I guess people like this guy are using as some some.
I'm dark matter, dark matter. I I have a a basic idea of what it is, but dark matter in order to be more accurate. Can you just look it up and read us a basic synopsis? I'm sorry, is that too big of a word? A summary.
Douchebag, here we go.
A a freaking summary of the Nuremberg code. Do you know how to spell Nuremberg? It could Grant will tell you right now.
Alright, um, Nuremberg code.
If you know how to sp- spell Nuremberg, you're a douchebag.
It's more than eight letters. I might struggle.
There's like, there's like, there's like, when it goes vowel vowel. That's a those are toughies, man.
That's that is that is hard.
Nuremberg code is, uh, number one is permissible medical experiments, the great weight of the evidence before us to affect that certain types of. Medical experiments on human beings when kept within reasonably well defined bounds.
So it's it's based on the Nazis doing fucking experiments on fucking like Jews in concentration camps.
The first, so that means it's happening today.
The first sentence is.
Whole thing is about.
Yeah, yeah, the first sentence is the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. So that's exactly what's going on. Why? How are they in violation of that? I mean, you can you you don't have to get the vaccine. Nobody's forcing you to get the vaccine.
I don't know, bro. He's holding up that paper looking pretty angry. Also looking like he hasn't bought a fucking bottle of shampoo since nineteen seventy seven.
Two is the experiment should be such as to yield fruitful results for the good of society. Unprocurable by other methods or means of study and not random and unnecessary in nature. I mean. That doesn't describe the vaccine. I mean, I mean, it does describe the vaccine. Sorry.
So, so I'm getting out of it is, our left likes to the word Nazi around all the time. So now people like this guy have found a way to throw Nazi around as well to try to relate. Nuremberg code to.
It sounds a lot like that tit for tat shit I was talking about earlier. It's fucking tit for fucking tat. You, Grant, you're gonna, if you could do me a favor and like shift your fan or turn it down like a notch, cuz it is a like. No, no, I just I keep thinking it's my fan blowing in my ear.
That's good. Give me a second.
If if I were TJ, if I were to become a tattoo artist and a and a woman wanted me to put a tattoo on her breasts. Could I say that that's a tat for tit?
Yes.
Sweet. I got a new career, new career goals.
Career goals. Did you gotta, I guess, repeat it for Grant once you get there? Alright, Grant, you missed a great one. I said tit for I I miss I said tit for tat and dark matter's joke was this.
I asked if I became a tattoo artist and a woman wanted me to put a tattoo on her breast. Is that a tat for tit?
Yeah, I wanted you to hear that.
TJ forced you to listen to that. I I didn't I wasn't gonna repeat it.
Is the fan better?
Yes, it's much better. Thank you.
Because if he keeps that shit up, I'm gonna have to throw it up even higher.
Don't worry, don't worry. We he's he's locked up at this point. He wa- I won't let him hurt you anymore, Grant. Alright, uh, let me finish this guy off.
The definition we shall not be.
Do you think he fucking just quietly walked away when they said, eh, thank you, sir, your time has expired?
Wait, did it cut his mic?
I hope so, cuz he I he's probably sounds a lot less mean without the fucking microphone down his throat. It looks like he's sucking it right there in that fucking picture. Jesus Christ, bro. This whatever. I I I hope that's what they say to them when they're dying of Covid. Thank you, sir, your time has expired.
Uh, yeah, he's dying of Covid. Uh, is the Nuremberg code, sir? We can't give you the vax. It's experimental.
Alright, uh, here we go. Another city hall one. Gonna get some of these out of the way.
Dan Vander Swag.
Dan what?
Speaking on behalf of my his grandkids.
Dude, this guy was talking before he fucking got to the podium.
Yeah.
Listen to this.
It's not the sharpest tool.
Right there, speaking on behalf of my his grandkids. You with that diaper on your face, if he farted right now, could you smell it? That's how stupid this is.
That's that's not how fucking masks work, you fucking moron. Jesus, and he's and that's how stupid this is right now.
And the thing is, anytime that somebody says some shit like that, they got that posture, that smug ass look of like, yeah.
I got him.
Got him. So they're so dumb. They don't know what's flying out of their mouth is so fucking stupid.
We're all playing games here with people's lives?
Yeah, you are.
That that's literally what you're fucking doing. You you are the one willing to play the game like you you're like my freedom is more important than your fucking safety.
Yeah.
That's the game you're playing. And and look, I love fucking freedom. Don't get me fucking wrong, but like you, nobody out there is like. You're infringing on my right to drive a hundred miles an hour through a school zone. Like, we all understand that there's a fucking safety measure being taken there.
Yeah.
Jesus.
And I'm sick of it. I represent all these hardworking guys that couldn't be here today. Take off work to put up with this BS that you guys are putting down. And there's hell coming. There's hell coming and I'm not doing it to threaten anybody, but there's a lot of good guys out there ready. There's hell coming and I'm not doing it to threaten anybody, but there's a lot of good guys out there ready to do bad things soon.
That's threatening.
I'm not, I'm not saying this to threaten anybody, but there's a lot of good guys out there who are ready to do bad things soon.
I'm just saying.
Cause they scream at each other around the fucking, around the lunch table. They're getting ready to do battle.
How satisfying would it be to just see someone come up to this guy and sock him? Like just take him down.
It would be great if a really good guy did a really bad thing and just popped this guy in the mouth.
Yeah.
And watch him crumble like the little bitch he is.
Do, you know, the peoples that they're yelling at, you know, they never yell back. It'd be kind of, kind of neat if they did once in a while. Like.
You know, now that you say that, anytime I do see something like this, it's always when there's no one that can yell back.
Dude, there's a, there's a ton of like Republicans out there that think that like if you're not a Republican, you, you don't own a firearm. Or something like, it is, it's ridiculous. All right, Grant, are you a Republican? Do you own a firearm?
Yes.
Dark Matter, are you a Republican?
No.
Do you own a firearm?
Yes.
I'm not a Republican. I own a firearm. So you, you, you see a fucking trend here? Like th- this idea that you like, you have to be some like Republican voting conservative in order to fucking like. Take advantage of the second amendment is ridiculous.
It's, it's like with anything that's tribalistic. If you, if you're not, if you're not all the way on this one thing, you're just completely ousted.
Yeah.
You, you know how many times people on Twitter, like just because I'm arguing about. S- you know, like supporting some kind of progressive social value, like I'm, uh, you know, arguing in favor of LGBT rights or something like. And I get called a communist, like what the fuck? Like what does this have to do with my economic opinions like?
Just, just take it to the extreme. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the best way to beat your argument, dark matter. We're, we're gonna take what you say and just throw the far end of it.
It, it, if, it's really telling when someone's best defense of their own positions is to create a straw man of your positions and beat the shit out of it. It, it shows you how little they have to go on, on their own fucking convictions, you know?
Well, at the same time, it's like they're not willing to talk because if they're, if they're willing to put you at the far opposite end of where they are. They're not willing to talk about or, or find any agreements or, or talk about what you can disagree on, you know, it. But they'll be the first to tell you, hey, you're cutting us, cutting us off from conversation.
It's, um. I don't know. It's, it's kind of mind numbing to try and fucking actually talk to people. Uh, you know, e- even Ian Miles Chong, uh, because Grant and I love, I, I've, I told you I unfollowed him, right? I had to.
What?
I had to.
Well, I never, I never followed him anyway. I just see his shit come up.
First of all, I'm still on a fucking, my, my account is blocked. So I haven't been able to fucking.
He blocked you?
No, 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 like my, my Twitter.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, so, so like, I haven't been able to fucking tweet or I wasn't even able to retweet drunken peasants. Uh, you know, thing about us being on the show last night, you know, like, I, I wasn't even able to do that. So. But, uh, the inability to reply is infuriating. Also, he says so much dumb shit. It's a total gish gallop. And it's, uh, and then the, the people like, sometimes you hit those, like I hit a few ringers, man. I hit a few really good ones. Um, that, you know, tweets that kind of blew up on his freaking stuff, uh, talking shit about him. But at the, the same time, the other ones that don't blow up or whatever, like people actually simp for this chubby Malaysian chode. And it is so frustrating.
I, I wanna see pictures of those people. I wanna, I wanna see what they look like. Cause any, any, any of them that have come at me.
Dude, they, they, they wanna hear some Malaysian dipshit grift to them and say, America first. Like that's how fucking pathetically stupid these people are.
You know, every day I still try to go at them. I still try to call them all kinds of names. I, I, you know. Tell them to suck shit, you know, it just everything and nothing. I get nothing from them.
Oh, I've gotten, yeah, I've gotten my fair share of replies.
Infuriating is.
He asked me what I had done to earn my fucking freedom. This, this fucking chicken hawk Malaysian fuck. Keyboard warrior douche ass like directly replied to me asking what I had done to earn my freedom. And I replied like, I was born in America. So please tell me, what did you do? Did you, did you, cause I personally have not served. I've lived on army bases. I got a lot of respect for fricking service members. Dark Matter has served. Uh, Grant? You know, is it, we're, we're talking to vets here. Like, like you don't just get the automatic pass on that shit. It fucking drives me nuts.
He has.
I don't know.
I would say he, he of all people has the ultimate opportunity to put his money where his mouth is because Malaysia. Isn't exactly free, at least it's not nearly as free as we are. So he should, he should rise up and lead the revolution.
He talks about the second amendment, like they got one. Yeah, he's act- there's actual Sharia law in Malaysia and he won't bitch about it. But he'll, he'll bitch about Sharia law threats in Kansas or some shit like it's so fucking clear. How fucking full of shit this motherfucker is. And it's so, and, and anyone that did the even slight, but he says what they wanna hear and that's all they fucking care about. Don't challenge my thoughts, like fucking just, you know, if, if, uh. And, and it's really weird cause he's a DeSantis like fucking blowhard. He loves Ron DeSantis. I'm like, bitch, I live in Florida and I don't fucking, like, I don't talk about this shit nearly as much as you do from fucking. You know, Chow Main or wherever the fuck it is you're from. Am I, I'm not allowed to do that. I'm not allowed to do that. I'm sorry. I apologize. Whatever the Malaysian city is.
That's great.
You know, I, I thought about. I, I thought about like, would the first time I came across him. And like, and saw something his that really pissed me off, cause I missed out on the whole gamergate. I came in like right as that was like coming to an end. And, uh, I didn't know that he was, you know, a player in that. He put up a tweet, it was fuck, I would say about three years ago. And I, it was the first time I actually read a tweet and just got like really pissed off, like, like where did he come up with this? He said that Jordan Peterson is the modern day Christopher Hitchens.
Oh, God.
And I, I lost my shit. I'm like, let's see. One guy writes a book called God is Not Great. I can't be a straight up answer if he believes in God or not. Uh, today's, today's version.
Not, not only that, but Peterson basis is basically calls himself a cultural Christian.
Uh, he, well, me and a few buddies, um, we call them, uh, we, we call them porch atheists. It, it's, it's one of those they don't believe, but it, it's like they, they have no problem with everybody else living in delusion. Pursuit of truth means nothing to these people. They would rather everybody, you know, toe the line, follow along and it's. You, you know, you know what I'm getting at. It's just, it's, it's sad.
Yep.
People, people knowingly not believe, but they're totally okay with everybody else just falling right into the shit.
Or worse yet, they're atheists, but they think that, uh, if everyone becomes an atheist, it will lead to the downfall of society. That Christianity is the only thing holding everything. There's the glue holding society. Yeah.
It's the pillars. What are you gonna replace it with if you take it away? You heard that one?
Right. What's the doctor gonna replace your cancer with if they cut it out?
Um, you guys wanna, let's finish this one off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's like, uh.
Sorry, we're talking so much.
No, that's, God, thank, thank God.
Asked us to fucking do.
Thank God you're fucking talking, man. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be strong, man. I really am. Um. I think I'm doing, I'm doing half decent. I have, I have my moments, I guess. Alright, let's, uh, wrap this shit up. Go to break.
Watch what's coming. These, these mandates are against the Nuremberg codes.
There he goes again. If somebody posted a Facebook meme, somebody fo- somebody posted a Facebook meme, that has to be.
So wait, so wait a second.
This is why I asked. It had to be something that they're throwing around.
Did, did he?
One person starts.
Did he write it on his arm?
These, these.
Yes.
You see him look at his arm.
These, these mandates are against the Nuremberg codes. The first one states voluntarily informed consent.
Yeah, I just read it and you're not forced to get the shot.
I wanna see how he spelled Nuremberg on his arm.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's not correct. It's probably like N R M B R G.
Nirm.
This guy looks like, you know, Nirm.
They should have a lawyer sitting there and every time some douche nozzle says something like this, the lawyer should just go, no.
So they, they actually should have, uh, I believe they often have counsel up there. Um, but the, did you hear his next question?
Form consent. Are you a Nazi?
It is, it's like they're all in the same Facebook group.
Right. They don't have, none of them have like original thoughts. They all have the same fucking phrases.
This is like.
To throw around.
The shittiest Facebook group ever and what, and all of the members just repeat whatever the fucking like top comment is on every post. And they think that that's like fact from there forward.
I, I want some of these people that, that are sitting on these seats to go, sir, there is nothing you have said. We haven't heard from the six other guys that came in here and spoke right before you. To a T, the same shit.
None of us are any smarter for listening to your diatribe.
Actually, you just wasted my time and I, I could smell the brain cells going.
We, we are all dumber for having listened to it. May God have mercy on your soul.
Look at the chat, look at the chat. Nuremberg codes.
You're sitting, they're sitting there off of Vietnam and, and fighting for the country, but you're gonna tell him to wear a mask? Sir.
He had to wear a mask and numb.
Dude, and, and if you're willing to die for your country, but not get vaccinated, like, like what, where are? Like what, what train of thought do you have going on where you're like, I would die for my country? I would take a bullet for my country, but I wouldn't, I won't, yeah, but I won't take a fucking needle for my neighbor.
Guess what every army recruit had to do? They had to put on a fucking gas mask and go into a gas chamber. And, and, and then take it off. Just, you know, to, to, uh, yeah, show how it works.
That's what happened to dark matter. He never recovered. His hair fell out. He's, it is hair, his face got all whatever the fuck it is. And it just never went back. No, yeah, no.
See, see.
He, well, okay, fine. I'll give you this dark matter. If you're handsome now, what you were before the incident.
Mm-hmm.
Was, you know, you were, you were, yeah, you were, you were a goddamn George Clooney and now you're a you. Ah, you poor sack of shit. Ah, I feel bad for you. Look at Grant. Grant's got the biggest fucking grin on his face right now. He loves this. He loves this. Grant masturbates to me talking shit to you. I'm, I'm sure of it. And then dark matter masturbate, yeah, and dark matter masturbates to Grant masturbating about it. If you didn't catch the drunken peasants episode last night, you, cause I porn shamed the shit out of this man. Uh, it's to a, to a large audience and it was fantastic. Um, but it, it was a total, a lot of fun. There was, I don't know how many people like talked, saying it was the fucking funniest conversation they'd heard on drunken peasants in a long time.
Didn't you end up talking about fucking a buffalo through a wall?
Only because you brought it up, dark matter.
Well, I mean. Now watch that be the thing that makes people go back and watch it.
And, and it had a, uh, with a, a freaking diesel exhaust pipe of a, of.
For, for vagina.
Exactly, yeah.
That, that'll, that'll.
Dude, you see what you're missing? You see what you're missing, everybody? You gotta check that shit out. That's, and that's, that's me when I'm fucking like downed and depressed. This is where my mind goes, I guess.
Well, I avoided them for years because of loyalty to this show.
Ah, man, like they.
Cause years ago, there was a little bit of a.
Oh, yeah, but they, they, that was the, with the first time they had us on, they admitted that they stole our fucking, our, uh, little. Uh, setup here that we have going on, cause they used, they used to have all their video on the bottom.
Corners.
Yeah, and then after we started doing ours, they fucking all of a sudden changed it. And Ben came right out and, and admitted like, yeah, yeah, we, we, it just made more sense. And I was like, look, man, it's hardly like stealing. When it's such an obvious idea, you know what I mean? Um, anyway, no, they're, those guys are great. Uh, Billy is fucking fantastic. I, Billy had me dying laughing last night. Um, yeah, I, I suggest completely going and checking out that, that episode and subscribing to them if you're not, because they do, they put out a lot of great shit. Uh, we had a lot of fun. Um, alright, we're gonna take a break. Actually, I'm gonna try and finish this twenty nine seconds.
I appreciate the fact that I can't control myself. There's a lot of other guys that control myself that can't.
I can't control myself. There's a lot of other guys that can control myself.
Any sense.
Well, I, it makes sense to me.
Oh, it does. Yeah.
I can't control myself, but all these other guys, they can control me.
I don't, I don't get why anybody would wanna go to one of these. If they want their voice heard, why would you go in there and just start yelling? Why don't you just calm tone, just get what you got to say, you know? You're used to hear, cause now you're just being.
No, he's got a right to be pissed. His uncle was in Vietnam.
Yeah.
They, like, that's literally, like, like, I'm, I can't even say, look at me, I'm the vet. I have to use a family member. To grandstand for, even if they agree with you, let them get up there and fucking say it. And it, and if they are such a fucking badass and hard ass, then wearing a mask is not the fuck, dude, I work thirteen hour shifts with a fucking mask. You in a hot kitchen, you fucking little bitches, you little pussies.
Hey, fucking TJ, two words for you. Nuremberg codes.
That's what I should be saying at my job. Mumbling under my breath the entire time. Goddamn Nuremberg. Article one of the goddamn, what are you, the fucking Nazis or some shit? Fucking.
You know, the thing that kind of, kind of makes me think is, these guys, this revolve, this, this is their day. This is what they think about all day, shit like this, you know? You know, this, this guy probably has a kid that's doing like middle school, high school sports and no, he's, he's more worried about, you know, bitching about masks.
And, and their kids probably don't give a fuck.
No.
It's one hundred percent.
No, they don't care.
Control themselves. That's why they're not here right now.
Yeah, or somebody.
I have nothing else to say. Do what's right. There's a lot of bad things coming.
That, that, that's threatening and then people are fucking applauding that. Point, I'm not threatening you, I'm pointing at you, telling you.
There's a lot of bad things coming.
And I'm like looking at you as I fucking walk away after like, dude. Yeah, you're trying to be intimidating. It's not fucking working. You look like, you look like you're a softball, like the junior softball fucking coach. Trying to talk shit to the umpire about a fucking, what you thought was a strike. You know what I mean? Like get the fuck out of here. Go be a first base coach, you fucking pathetic bitch. Nobody's impressed. Fuck these fucking blowhard sons of bitches. I'm really sick of them. They really think they run this shit.
Yeah.
You know, there, there was a time where you could say, you know what, write your congressman. You know, and that, that used to mean something. You could send a letter. No, these people have to fucking just start yelling in your face.
Yep, uh, or, or guess it doesn't count. Alright, we're gonna take a break. Uh, we're way past break time. Uh, we'll be right back after the short. Metal ass messages. So stay tuned, everybody. All right, we're back. Uh, dark matter, you with us? Click.
Um, I'm eating Cheez-Its.
Every time dark matter comes back from like muting himself, he sounds like, you know, the sound when you're getting a robo call? Or like one of those like telemarketer calls and it's like, whoop, it makes that little whoop sound as soon as you accept the call or whatever. And it's patching you through to some guy and he's like, hello, my name is Mike. Like dude. You're in Bangladesh right now. Don't, don't, don't tell me you're in California, you know, don't lie to me. Oh, fuck you, my brochod. It's so fucking predictable. Dude, dark matter.
Yeah.
Put, put away the Cheetos.
Cheez-Its.
Whatever. Put them away. The cheesy snacks.
I just did. I did before you, right before you said that.
Good. All right, then I'll take you out of bars.
I had a, I had a theory while, while I was getting my snack. You know why Ian Miles Chode could never start, like, take part in the revolution?
Why?
You have to be a male model to assassinate the Malaysian prime minister. He, he ain't nowhere close to a male model.
He doesn't, he won't talk shit about his own country at all. And he is, uh. He tries to look like attractive nowadays. It's pretty amusing, actually. Like, bro, he looks like the fucking, uh, you know, it's a trap. Fucking Star Wars. Like, the guy is not, whatever. Good luck to you getting your dick wet, buddy. You need it.
I've even made jokes at him about that. And he won't. Never getting a woman or anything like that. Nothing.
Not, all right, let me.
I've, I've tried to insult him in every way possible and it doesn't happen. I get the twelve hour on, on Twitter alone, cause I, I guess I said the word too many times, you know?
Did he, dude, that, that shit really does irk me how I get, uh. I get, I get banned for a lot of shit on a lot of platforms over the dumbest little stuff. Use the word survive and it's like, oh, you can't do that. You can't, you can't say stupid or, or any of that stuff on Facebook anymore.
Uh, retarded. You can't say the.
No, I mean, that's been gone, but like you can't even say stupid now.
So wait, if your grandmother was in surgery and there was like complications, whatever, do you, and you ask a family member, did she survive? Like, you're, that's it? You're gone?
I, I got banned for seven days on Twitter for saying, you anti-mask dummies think that you can out-survive anybody, but you can't even handle wearing a mask for fifteen minutes. Uh, nobody is intimidated by you. Or something like that. And I don't know which fucking word it was in that, but like, that got me seven days. And that I'm still waiting, like I, I can't do anything on, on Twitter. And.
That was Twitter that did that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you, it's, it's kinda decent timing, cause I've not been spending like any time online. Recently, I've just been like taking a break, kind of like you did with dark matter, which is, you know? I've just been, it's. I don't know.
Sometimes you gotta do that, man, because fucking people take their toll.
Yeah, I mean. I'm just, I guess I'm not in the right headspace to even be dealing with it. Right now, like I've got enough on my mind. That like that extra shit is just too much.
Twitter is definitely one of those things. You've got, you've got to know when to unplug, you know, you, you really do.
That's the fucking like social media in general. I'm not gonna say the internet, because you can still like go watch a documentary on the internet or something. You know, but like, social media is just a fucking. Just, it's toxic. And, and it, it makes, it brings out the toxicity in people and, and when I'm already like not. Feeling like, you know. Real, real. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I've been going through like this emotional roller coaster and shit, like I don't need all that extra shit.
You don't, you don't have the vinegar flowing right now. That's, that's what it is.
Sure.
Steven James, who says, you lefties wanted this, you allowed it, you promoted censorship. Can you point to somewhere where any of us advocated like?
Fuck.
Like words that, that have to. That we use that, you know, have our accounts shut down, like, can't say, you know, uh, survived or the, or the account gets shut down, like, where, where did we, we ever support?
This is not the panel that you wanna fucking try that shit with either, because none of us are embarrassed to use those words.
That's the, that's the example of what we were talking about earlier. You either had to put us completely on one side or lump us all together.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it's.
Cause he knows good, he knows good and well that, that us three weren't for that.
Yeah.
Right. And, and what, what gets me, it's, it's, it's the, this transference, like, you, you see one person make a ridiculous argument. And then you associate. This other person with their side. So then you think they make that same argument and then you just accuse them of shit. When they had nothing to do with it. It's the other person.
Yeah, I, uh, I'd see a lot of fucking like word games being played and shit like that. It's whatever. I'm, I'm not, uh. Anyway, all right, quick reminder, uh, that Stream Labs is still open. I don't think we've gotten any yet, but if you wanna jump in on that, I will be happy, happy, happy. To feature them and, uh. And most likely get us banned if it's, if it's like some kind of fucking urban dictionary definition or some shit.
Remember you guys. Stream labs because I get eighty percent now, so.
Yeah.
That should entice you to do some more stream labs.
It should. There goes any possibility of getting any stream labs. Oh, well. Thanks anyway, dark matter.
I find eighty-five percent, Jesus.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're talking me into it real good. Uh, let's do the, uh, you, you guys have heard of the milk crate challenge?
Vaguely, I'm not familiar with it.
Where they set up milk crates in a, in a, uh, stack that makes it like a steps, you know, and I, I wanna say that it's like. Nine or ten high at the, at the center of the stack.
Jesus.
Um, but I've seen.
One I've seen hasn't gone well.
Uh, so. What the fu, oh, this is the wrong one. Sorry, hold on.
Oh my God, it's happening. Oh my God, the shit's about to go down. It is happening.
Just play the rest. It went that far.
Yeah, you might as well.
I guess I have to at this fucking point. Oh geez. But.
It's happening. Trump is president. Woo! Trump, 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 he's coming to be president. It's happening, people.
It says it's a test, you Daffy broad.
Hey, that one dude that was in the chat in the first hour, this is what we're talking about.
Like this is, you can almost tell from her voice that she's a Trump supporter.
Yeah.
It's happening.
August eleventh, that was on the eleventh, but.
The narrator comes in and says like. It did not happen.
Does she, do you think these people ever feel embarrassed? I mean, it's like they're incapable.
No shame at all.
I don't know why it is doing.
Well, no, no self shame. They, they always feel ashamed of others.
Why is my? You are a piece of trash. Stop. Why, why, why is it doing this? There you go, X split. Thank you, Jesus.
To say, an hour and twenty-four minutes in, he fucks everything up.
I've, I already, I already told you, I'm not even the fucking in the mood. To be doing this shit. I really am like. Reaching deep to. Ah, to kinda get through this. All right, let me try this one more time, guys. Sorry, my apologies. My mind is all over the fucking place right now. All right. We'll get this Stream Labs back in the box. And. That'll work. All right, let's move on with the next content here. Uh, what do you think of? Hmm. Oh, I was gonna do the, uh, that we just did the nothing happened lady. Get rid of that one. We're gonna do the milk crate challenge here. Okay, I'm sorry, that's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven high. Look at how shaky this poor son of a bitch is.
They never end well.
Masks are dangerous.
Dude, dude. Dude. All right, does he make it? By the way, they had such little faith in this motherfucker, they didn't even set up the, the down steps. You see how it goes from four to one?
Yeah.
Like they didn't even, they knew he wasn't gonna make it. They didn't even bother trying to set up the fucking, the way for him to get down.
Or even then, if he's on his way down, he's gonna end up like, the momentum just is gonna carry him down. There's no need for the rest of them.
How many steps down do you think he makes it before he eats shit?
It's gotta be just one more.
Yeah.
No, no.
Is it playing a little smoother for you guys?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's, it's enough that we see what's happening.
No, no. Ooh, fuck.
Nice doors.
Ready? One more time. I'll play it through this time. Oh.
He bounced.
Yeah, that hurt. Let me see if I can get that freeze frame one more time.
You're not gonna.
Oh, it was so close. Oh. Bruh.
His face is straight down, like.
Yeah, he, his arms flail and then nothing breaks his fall. One more, I'm gonna catch it this time. Ready? One, two, three. Ah. Damn, that looks like it hurt. Yeah. All right, dark matter. Next time we meet up, we're doing the milk crate challenge.
All right, I'll, I'll hold the camera. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I wanna see somebody six foot six stand on fucking seven stacks of damn.
Why, we didn't, didn't we play one where the dude rolled a joint while he did it? Or I saw one where dude rolled a, uh, I'm sorry, a blunt. Fucking broke up the weed, rolled a blunt as he did the milk crate challenge all the way to the other end and was like smoking it by the time he came down the bottom steps. Like it can be done. There are people out there that can do it. Um, here we go. Never be a beta.
Never be a beta. Just never, ever do it. It is death. Never, ever, ever do it. Okay? Just wipe that out of your mind.
What are you wearing, talking about never being a beta?
Dude, dude, I don't know what you're talking about. Them, them white tennis shoes. Purposely distressed faded jeans in the black wife beater with the unbuttoned fucking shirt over it, hands in pockets. And long necklace with balding and beard. Like, dude, this guy is alpha as fuck, bro.
Nothing good comes from that. Ever. Okay, the only thing good is if you're like in jail and you're about to get shot, you're like, okay, okay, you know? Other than that, if you're in a free society, don't do it. It's just, it's just, it just doesn't happen. It cannot happen. Okay? Now going.
It, it cannot happen. Now, while, while I keep my hands in my pockets and pace around in my New Balance shoes.
And skinny jeans.
And a wife beater with a unbuttoned shirt, like yellow fucking plaid.
With that voice.
Guys, do not be a beta. I'm deadly serious right now.
Just do not do it.
From there, and by the way, the sooner you accept this, the easier life gets. You're like, oh, life is actually awesome when you accept it. As long as you don't accept it and you're like, I just want someone to like me for the real beta me, your life's gonna be fricking miserable. People around you will be miserable and you will be miserable. So just get over it. Now, okay, it doesn't mean to walk around paranoid and alpha males comfortable themselves.
Jesus.
Is that right?
Who, this is like, this is the equivalent of the alpha male of, of white bearded bald guy version of Ian Miles Chong. It's like that, that fucking grift. Like you are not the person, the badass who think you are.
He didn't give a fuck about being a beta until about two years ago.
Yeah, and, and do, I'm sorry, are like women like lining up to be with you or some shit? Like I doubt it, buddy. I fucking doubt it.
I, I would not classify him in. Amongst the balds, by the way, he has enough hair up there. It's not like me.
We know which direction he's going in. He's not getting more hair.
See, but at the thing, at the same time, usually when people get to where he's at. They're like, that's it. It, it's, it's all going. I can't.
That's what, yeah, that's what I did.
Yeah.
Like you can't even.
You'd be a beta if you looked like that.
Yeah. There's the only one way that this guy could be an alpha is if he's got a ton of fucking money and he can pretend like he's like that, but like, I'm sorry. It's either big money or big dick, buddy. And, and the skinny jeans don't leave anything to the imagination.
Well, even then, you can. He could look like that, but his body doesn't like show confidence. Like his posture and everything. He doesn't show that he's confident. Like his posture, he doesn't show that he's confident.
Hands in the pockets the entire time and the, like, the, please don't ever be a beta, please. Don't do it.
You can't really fake it, I guess.
Going from there, what you have, okay, the the number one trait of an alpha is there's is self comfort. So just be comfortable with yourself. Stop being uncomfortable with yourself.
Wait, if, so if a beta is comfortable with themselves, they're an alpha? Right?
He looks like.
The number one trait.
It's, it's, yeah.
What the fuck?
That's, that's what the logic did takes.
Get the fuck off my screen, you fucking loser. You fucking beta bitch. Alright, um, I don't know why this won't, there we go. Like a bunch of emojis right here. Let's just leave a bunch of emojis next to Grant. It's always fun. Um, hmm, which direction you wanna go in? Like, I have some stuff that looks like it would be heavily copyrighted. But then I also have some, oh, there's, there's a, alright, alright, let's do this one. Slow mo, ouch.
Oh shit.
He actually does a good tuck and roll here, but still.
The hell was he trying to do?
It's gonna push off and like do a fro- uh, leapfrog, but dude gets him last second, so he's got nothing to push on, all the momentum going. It's actually a good tuck and roll. He might have got the wind knocked out of him, but he he uh, that, I was doing a tuck and roll very similar to that when I fucking snapped out my left elbow. Cause I was trying, I did, I wasn't flipping as much as this guy was, so I had to put my like, my hands were gonna like start the roll for me. And as soon as my left hand hit, my left elbow buckled, like I just had the angle wrong, I guess.
Oh, okay. See, I thought tuck and roll was what you did before your boyfriend came over.
Look, I admit when I, when I fuck up, alright, god damn it. And it's often, unfortunately. Uh, alright, let's get rid of this one. Alright, yeah, let's get through a few of these quick clips, I guess. It's always fun to do. I'm sorry you guys have to watch me. I'm literally deleting them as I use them, just so I don't play them twice. Uh, we've got, uh, oh, this is a classic.
Grab his dick and twist it.
Oh my god, this is an MMA fight, dude.
You twist that dick.
Twist his dick.
Twist his dick. Oh my god. All dick twist.
That's not legal.
Dude, the old dick twist?
That's not legal, no, you can't.
Right here, right here.
Oh my god. All dick twist.
The old dick twist.
The old dick twist.
And he's demonstrating it.
Dude, that is, this is, I mean, it's obviously set up, but this guy is so fucking hilarious.
Grab his dick and twist it.
Oh my god.
Look at this fucking girl just dying laughing in front of him.
This is an MMA fight, dude.
You twist that dick.
Twist his dick.
Twist his dick. Oh my god. All dick twist.
I fucking love it. The old dick twist. That's how you do it, right there. Twist his dick. That should be a fucking Stream Labs.
Twist his dick.
Ongoing thing here.
Dude, I I really do need to make a note to to make Twist His Dick a Stream Labs because that is uh. Absolutely fantastic and should forever live in podcast infamy. The old, I'm just gonna write the old dick twist. I know what I mean. I'm gonna write it in all caps. The ol- the apostrophe OL dick twist.
What was OL apostrophe?
Whatever. Fuck you. I'll do both.
No, no.
You know what? Grammar Nazi.
If he, if he isn't affected by the old dick twist, then you just pump it. Just pump it until he's debilitated and it starts secreting. That's how you know it's, he's debilitated.
That is the Stream Labs right there.
No, no.
That is it.
God damn it, I just, just put the fucking book away.
No, it's not. That was not supposed to be.
Hold on, damn it. I'm trying to do like five things at once here. Eleven thirty-five of which episode is this?
It's episode forty-four.
Three forty-four. Got it. Alright, thank you, Dark Matter.
I said forty-four, not three forty-four.
Yeah, except for I titled this fucking episode, so I I've got a better understanding of uh where this is coming from.
It, the the funny thing is, as he's saying it, I'm thinking to myself, he's got to know this is, this could go against him. He's gotta know it.
Well, they're gonna, it's gonna come back and haunt me when I'm giving my doctoral thesis.
Yes, it will.
Uh, what's your doctoral thesis gonna be on?
All dick twist.
How to milk the venom out of a snake, I don't know.
I don't know what to do with that. The old dick twist.
Ladies and gentlemen, he's got a speechless.
Yeah, that was. Snake milk or dark matter? Uh, let's see. Oh, uh, here's a City Hall one, but not quite like the other ones. See if you can tell what's going on here.
You guys work for us in 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 this uh environment. You answer to us. And I'm asking that you do not pass this policy in.
Real quick, real quick.
Thomas, we do appreciate you.
Have you seen this?
No, I haven't seen it, but I just wanna point out, you ever notice these type of people that. They're always going around saying that you work for us. Like, like, that particular person is so special because everybody on that. On the, on those seats right there work for them.
And I wonder how many times they have to hear that same thing over and over. You work for us, Sonny Jim.
Yeah, probably about as many times as a cop, a cop trying to give someone a speeding ticket.
Yeah, yeah.
It tells the world that you know you're small, but you wanna feel special by saying that.
Yep.
Alright, uh, let's see if you can tell. It's not the, not that part that's important. It's this part. They're, they're trying to call up the next speakers.
Phil McCracken. Phil McCracken.
Phil McCracken.
Phil McCracken.
Salk Suk Mahidic.
Su- Suk Mahidic.
Ophelia McHawk. McHawk.
God.
Fucking, this is like, I titled, I titled this, I titled this fucking uh, the Mose of City Hall Get Pranked by Bart Simpson.
Does it show everyone else? Like, does it, does it show anybody else going like, wait a minute?
I don't, I don't even, I I don't even know if they'd like legally have to do it anyway. Like, they have to go through it just as part of the like process for the legislative thing, which would make it even fucking funnier, I guess.
I leaned over. I leaned over. Don Keattick.
Hey, you remember that in the army, don't you, Dark Matter? The donkey dick?
No.
The fuel spout that you put on the cans. Called it the donkey dick.
That's not the donkey dick he knows. He remembers. It's a totally different one. He's like, I'll never forget. We were stationed in Tijuana.
That's why he said no.
Actually, he said no very quickly.
Yeah.
Thou don't prosteth too much.
Well, that was motor pool, so that, that was like a common thing with us.
Mm-hmm, yeah, them them guys in motor pool, they donkey dicked a lot. What can I say? Thank you for your service.
Hey.
Jesus.
Wayne Kerr.
It's a dirty job, but somebody's gotta do it.
Wayne, Wayne Kerr.
Yeah, how did he not pick up on this?
Wayne Kerr.
That's what I mean. There's gotta be, there, you gotta see the faces on everybody else. Somebody has to have been like, hey, uh, you know?
No, they, I mean, I I almost think that they have to. If someone signs up to speak, they have to ask them if they're ready to speak. And so Pete, someone just had a fucking, a good time with it and they like, I I'm pretty sure are obligated to fucking make sure that they, you know, he might have known. But still has to read them out, which is fucking fantastic. Makes me wanna go to more City Hall meetings. I've only been to a few and they were fucking infuriating. This, they're, it's really shitty. It it it's a microcosm of our national politics just in a, on a local scale. And it is stupid and sucks.
Did you tell him that hell's coming?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did. I said, hail Fauci. Hail Fauci. Hail Fauci. Alright, let's see, uh, let's do.
Just go up to, just go up there and do a Doc Holiday, say win.
Yes.
Say win.
Alright, uh, this is the.
Or do a skin that smoke wagon.
That might be a Stream Labs again. Skin that smoke wagon. Hold on, let me write this down. Dark Matter, you're giving me way too much to work with here. I'm trying to run a show.
Wagon is about a, a firearm, TJ.
It does not even fucking matter when you say it like that. When you say it like that, it sounds a lot like a Stream Labs.
How am I supposed to say it? I said it indist- I, it was totally indistinguishable from the movie. From Kirk, uh, Kirk, uh.
Cameron.
No, why can't I remember his name now?
Skin Kirk Cameron Smoke Wagon? Is that what you're telling me?
And what, wait, why can't I remember his name?
I don't know. Kirk Douglas?
I think that is him.
Kirk Douglas?
Yeah.
Oh, so I was right. Okay, never mind. I was thinking, okay, never mind. Shut up. Everybody shut up.
It was actually Michael Douglas. You don't remember him, right? Used to do a lot of old westerns.
Michael Douglas is the totally different style.
Yeah, he's more Catherine Zeta Jones. Catherine Zeta Jones, is that who he used to be married to?
Kirk Douglas is his father. Wait, no.
Dude, are we?
Kurt Russell, wait.
Kurt Russell, that's it, yes.
Jesus, Escape from LA, yeah, yeah, wow. We are, we are terrible. You know what? I'm gonna blame the chat for not correcting us sooner. It's not even our fault.
A lot of the chat is younger than us.
I'm, my, look, I've got, my mind is all cloudy right now. I'm fucking, I'm drinking and I'm smoking, so. You can't blame me. Blame these sons of bitches below me. Uh, this is called the Elephant's Toothpick.
Is there supposed to be sound?
No.
Dude, it looks like a, like fucking Hiroshima. Jesus Christ. Why is that called the Elephant's Toothpick?
It's a reaction that they had, that, a chemical reaction that creates like this fluff foam. And it just grows and grows and grows. There's actually one that they did on a much larger scale. Um, and it was like, it filled up like an entire fucking backyard in approximately like one point five seconds.
So crazy. How do they get rid of it?
Uh, who the fuck knows? The the videos never go that far.
I wanna know where TJ comes across the idea of, hey, I need to find videos of things that fluff up.
This is actually, this is on a, a physics based, uh, like Twitter.
Yeah, yeah, we, we know you're gonna try to cover up some asshole.
Yeah, yeah, alright, fine. Oh, ah, let me get rid of my fat folder here. Elephant's toothpick, fuck yeah. Uh, how about F you, little spider?
Fuck you, little spider.
So in case you didn't catch it, if I didn't get it large enough there.
Fuck you, little spider.
I fucking love it. Yeah, and what is that, uh, House of the Rising Sun, yeah?
Yeah.
In the house of the rising sun. The animals. Fuck yeah, alright. Classic, nice little, I love the short clips. Get on out of here. What's next? How about, um. How to catch an extra six months?
Uh-uh. You finally get to it. What the hell?
Did you guys see it at all?
No, it's total like slideshow. Can't tell what's happening.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just put it on play forever and hopefully. So the, the cop that's got him on the top there lets go and the cop that's holding his legs is not prepared for it. And he gets. Just an open handed.
Open handed.
Pop.
Oh, okay.
It was at this moment that, and who knows, cause they almost don't even look like cops. They almost look like EMT or something, but they are. They are definitely trying to restrain this man and he is not fucking having it. Cop on the top should have warned. Cop holding the legs like, yo, releasing hands, cause he just got five fingers in the face. And this dude just instantly got like an extra six months added to his fucking, whatever sentence it was gonna be. Don't do this. Just, just don't. Alright, bam. You're gone. Uh, let's see, a gorilla fight at the zoo with lame ass spectators. They said, where's the zookeepers?
Don't put a stock away from that.
Yeah, wait.
I like, I like how the gorilla, I like how the gorilla fight is like, no, 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 but the people fight is like, twist his dick.
World star. World star. Actually, I'm really glad that nobody yelled world star while this was happening. Cause that would have been problematic, to say the least. Um, one more time, in case you fucking missed it, these gorillas, I don't know if they're hanging out for a while or if they're new to the, one of them's new to the enclosure or whatever, but. This is a pretty mean ass fight. Dude, look at that fucking beast.
Zookeeper comes out with a rolled up newspaper.
You stop that. You stop that. Mm-hmm. I'm not gonna give you any Pringles later. You want some Pringles? You better stop it. You want some Pringles? What we, what they don't know is Pringles is the other gorilla's name. They're like, yeah, I want some Pringles. Jesus Christ, dude, this is, I don't, I don't know, man. I don't know.
You, you just reminded me of Joe Rogan. What's up, freak bitches?
Freak bitches. Ah, alright. Go in ape shit. That's what I should have called that one. You wanna stick with some nature? Here we go. Here we've got, um. Don't underestimate your opponent. This has probably got copyright all over it, but this, I guess we'll see.
It's form of defense. Is in shock. The mantis takes full advantage. It may not inject any venom like the ants, but its jaws are fearsome weapon. Is in shock. The mantis takes full advantage. It may not inject any venom like the ants, but its jaws are fearsome weapon.
It is, it is holding that motherfucker in place and eating his fucking face.
Dude, it's got one arm in the eye.
Yeah. He's gouging his eye, holding his mouth open and eating his lips off. And by the way, this fucking lizard was going after the mantis as it wa- as if it was a meal.
Hey, fucking lizard, that's against the Nuremberg codes.
You can't do that.
Twist his dick.
Mm-hmm. Somebody, is anybody praying for him? No, no, not, not that kind. Oh. Look, he's eating his fucking face. And then it starts to like come out of the thing and it like, oh, it's all fucked up. And he's like in shock. And he's he's just not done with him. He's like, no, I'm coming back for you.
Man, nature is fucking brutal.
Nature is super brutal. And what's even more brutal than nature is YouTube's copyright system. Um, so hopefully we don't get one for that. That, I literally have one that's an Olympic, uh, a clip from the Olympics and I've titled it, um, Olympic copyright all over it. Like, I really want to play it, it's badass, but I really don't want to risk it. Uh, let's see, where we want to go, where we at? Uh, I love we got time for some more short ones here before we get into the, the crazy terrible third hour. Here's one called, uh, As Close As It Gets. This one might be tough for you guys if it's like, you know. Alright, we are going to make this, do this. Um. Sorry. Uh, can you guys, I don't know how choppy it is for you, I'll play it on forever. We'll listen to it once and then I'll mute it. See, did you see that?
Yeah.
That is as fucking close as you can possibly get. And he lands on his fucking feet.
Whoa, oh my god!
That is fucking crazy.
It is pretty dumb to ride your bike suddenly out there.
It is, he'll, he knows that now. That bike got fucked up. He's lucky he didn't get really fucked up. If it was like another six inches forward, he would have been fucking severely fucked up. He'd have got tossed into the truck that's filming. Um, alright, super close. That's about as close as it fucking gets for sure. Let's, uh, let's see, we've got some bicyclist karma here that we can follow up with.
What was he mad about?
I don't know, he was getting followed too closely, I guess. Cause he's like taking up the entire road.
Yeah, why'd you have to do that?
Uh, cause he's being a douchebag, so dude is following him closely to be a douchebag and then bicyclist turns around and threatens him with his lock. That fucking.
That's so embarrassing.
Dude. And I mean, there was, he almost got away, cause the truck can't, they're, whoever's following him is gotta stop for the forklift here and the bicycle can just go right around. He almost got away. Could have waited two seconds and talked shit and he would have been fine. Funny how that works. When you could have just, everything would have been fine if you just kept your mouth shut for like an extra little bit. But then everything changes. Alright, uh. Get rid of this one. We're gonna go with, let's see, bucket prank? Sure, why not? Did you, did you see the beginning?
Yeah.
So he's putting a bucket over dude's head and then he takes off his.
How'd this bucket just get on my head? What in the world? I'm not going crazy, I swear. Did someone just put a bucket on your head too? Bro, where did he go?
Even if this is fake, it's hilarious. Uh, good shit. That fucking, that move at the end there was.
Bro, where did he go?
Get out of there. Get out of there. See, that's, even if it's fake, that's funny. Like, that's enough of the other stupid ass, like ridiculously fake Facebook bullshit. At least do stuff that, that, that's that funny. Um, let's see, we've got, uh, hats off to these pros. Dude, I paused it right. Right, like, look at, watch this move. Jesus fucking Christ.
I, I love what this is called. Meal Team Six?
Strikes again.
Meal Team Six.
He, look, he's got a, an immediate fucking jam here. One shot and then jam. Two shots. And he had two, that, that was a, a double pull there. If you, watch. Down, down. Down, did wait. I can't tell if getting shot in the head made dude fire his gun or if the other dude had twin pull there.
Hmm, good question.
This is, this is the day before they go.
It's a twin pull. You can watch the, watch. Yeah. It's a twin, it's a twin pull. The first one went above, just above his hat, the second one actually fucking grazed his ass.
You know, this is the day before they go to fucking tell the city council that they're going against the Nuremberg code. These are the type of fucking gentleman that would do that.
Gravy seals, says Meldrac.
Gravy seals?
I mean, you could just calm special forces.
Extra special forces?
Yeah.
Jesus.
Learning disabled forces.
It's a very, uh, they're very strict on their recruiting. It's a very short bus. Alright, bye-bye, Meal Team Six. Alright, uh, let's see, where are we at?
What were they, what was they, what was that bullet ballet they were doing anyway? Like, I, I don't understand how that would be useful in combat.
It's, it's basically being able to follow instructions. And, and they couldn't even get that right. You understand? Like, they're like, okay, you fire two shots while the other guy takes cover. And then he, you switch and he fires two shots. And you do that back and forth for a couple of rounds. And like, they couldn't even get that right.
Normally you would go through a dry run first to kind of get the motions down.
They probably did. They're just so fucking dumb. They had with no trigger discipline and like just, this is why I don't feel safer when there's more people with guns. Cause people are idiots. I don't feel safer the more people are on the roads either. Like, when I'm driving, I don't feel safer, cause there's more people on the roads with cars. Like, that, that, that means there's more idiots out there. Same with fucking guns. There are responsible gun owners out there, we, the three of us included, uh, but there are irresponsible gun owners all over the fucking place and they don't make it any safer for any of us.
By the way, TJ Grant, well, he was, when he was talking about a dry run, he wasn't talking about your date nights. He was talking about like some more, like a, like a practice run.
Oh, okay. I thought that's when you just didn't spit on it.
How am I supposed to, why would I spit on it when there's already practically a waterfall right in front of me?
I mean, I'm literally about.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving y'all up to that, it's.
I'm literally about to go to fucking break. Like, what, what am I, what am I supposed to do to this son of a bitch? Here, here, there you go. You son of a bitch.
That's gonna run, that's, that's gonna make us, this fucking show drop down to two frames a fucking second.
You sick fuck. You sick fuck. Alright, uh, let's take a break, um, and when we come back, we'll, we'll cover, uh, like one or two more real quick funny videos and then the rest of it is gonna just be facepalm inducing bullshit, so prepare yourselves, uh, when we return, so stay tuned, everybody. Alright, we're back. Sorry about that. Trying to time it out perfectly, never works out. Uh, last reminder tonight that Stream Labs is still open, uh, get those in if you want. Always appreciate it. And, uh, a big thank you again to Grant. How about a big thumbs up in the chat for Grant for jumping in last minute? Always, always fun to fucking have Grant. Uh, we really appreciate you, buddy. Alright, um. Let's, uh, let's, we'll, we'll do a couple of fun ones and then get into the dumb shit. We'll do Nope.
Them giggle nervously, all of them looking straight up 172 feet. To see if Rick Charles can come down safely through the air and enter into the water. Knees very heavily taped.
Dude. That shit keeps zooming out. Keep, keep zooming, keep zooming, keep zooming, keep zooming.
It's like the kind of height where you say someone would, would die even if it's water.
Yeah.
It's concrete. You know, it's funny, like, you, you get fooled into thinking that the water in the back is where he's gonna go. And then you really see where he's gonna go.
Yeah. Bro, a- as crazy as this motherfucker is, I almost expected it to be a kiddie pool. Like, this is fucking insanity. Look, look, look at this, he, there, I've seen this before. The, the look on this motherfucker's face before he does this jump is like the, I'm about to die.
His girlfriend Linda, look at the face. She's talking to herself non-stop, a couple of smiles, a couple nods of con.
This. This is the, I'm about to fucking kill myself. 172 feet.
He's gotta test the, the air direction.
Meditating, what's it gonna feel like? What do I have to do right off the top? And there's Linda praying for him down below.
He's never done this before, he does not know what to expect. He's in the air, he's in good shape, very good. Alright, he didn't hit well. Now, he could have, he could have hurt himself. The dive was good, it was solid. He's a strong competitor.
He fucking made it.
Dude, I saw his legs start to separate before he went in.
Let's see.
You know what that means?
Yeah.
It hurts, yeah. An involuntary enema.
Well, yeah, he's, he's trying really hard to complete that rotation there and go feet first.
I mean, fuck, he had 172 feet to complete it.
Well, dude, but I mean, he didn't just jump, he fucking did a fucking flip and twist. Alright, flip. Jesus, he's gotta finish that rotation or it's fucking all, he does pretty good. His feet are together and pointed. Jesus, he's gotta finish that rotation or it's fucking all, he does pretty good, his feet are together and pointed. It sounds like a fucking, like Jerry Springer-ish, like, he didn't hit well, he could be dead right now, guys. We could've just watched someone die. Holy shit, not, yeah, nope. Nope. Like, there, there might be something on fire that I would have to make that, like, jump and I might not be able to fucking make myself do it.
Or just climb down.
Good thing he had knee guards on.
Yeah, man.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I noticed that, the announcer did say his, his knees were taped.
Maybe he's got bad knees from trying to jump like the hundred and fifty foot range and he said, step it up to a hundred and seventy-two. How tall does that tower go, I say? Alright, uh, I, god, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fucking tempt myself, I'm gonna play this Olympic one. I'm gonna probably have to mute it. You know what? I'm not, I'm not gonna do this. It's got literally the Olympic logo, the music and everything, I'm just, I'm not.
Like that little bit right there, I watched that, that knocked the show off.
See you in two weeks, guys.
Yeah. I'm not gonna do, alright, we'll, we'll do this one instead, it's called, uh, dude has a death wish. We're gonna kill the music there.
That's so fucking crazy.
So close he gets. So ridiculously close. And all these like little, you lose altitude on those little like twists and flips, you have to.
So close to those rocks, those jagged rocks.
Yeah, just hitting one, that, that's the end.
Yeah. Fucked up.
Fucked up, you're dead.
Yeah.
You're dead, you're, you're, he's traveling at like a hundred and some miles an hour right now, like you clip a foot and it's over. Fuck, there, there have been people that have died doing this, obviously. Uh, you know, and the bird suit shit too, but like this is.
Yeah, we don't know, but it was this guy.
Yeah, fuck that. That's that like no fear of death shit when you should have a fear of death. You're doing extremely deadly shit. Sorry, grabbing a beer. I'm drinking tonight. Has not been a good day. Alright, uh, we'll get rid of this one. And I guess we'll get into the dumb, dumb shit, if that's what you wanna do.
You mean, we, we weren't like already into the dumb shit?
No, the, the dumb dumb shit is really, really coming now.
The fucking city council meetings, school board meetings.
Alright, so, so here's, uh, a guy threatening about the vaccine. Alright, we'll play this one first.
What's up everybody, Justin here, I just heard through the grapevine, uh, a moment ago that all of the shots have been FDA approved. And they're pushing for mandatory, so with that being said, my response is this. I've got a shot waiting for anybody who dares bring a shot to our door, take it to the bank.
Make it mandatory.
I'm pretty sure this is the fucking, uh, don't be a beta guy he just shaved.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be scared of this guy.
Yeah, oh yeah, you'll tell you what.
I can't stand motherfuckers like that, dude, they, where they think they can say all that shit, come to my house and take it. Nobody gives a fuck about you, okay? You're not special.
You know, I think they know nobody gives a fuck about them, which is why they feel they can be all macho.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, and, and he's doing this on, on, I believe he's doing it directly onto TikTok.
Yeah. And then he'll complain when, when somebody goes knocks on his door like, hey, you, uh, posted this at, uh. Like that one dude that threatened Obama that one year, they showed the, uh, Secret Service out.
Of course, of course, alright, and now here's the same guy, uh, talking about the Afghanistan withdrawal.
I just heard a moment ago, President Biden refuses to move the August thirty-first deadline. He's allowing the Taliban to dictate what we do. And he's gonna leave our American people behind, you fucking coward. You, you fucking coward.
That dude did not give a fuck about Afghanistan until like three days before.
Ooh, Tom Mailer just subscribed.
Oh.
Thank you, Tom.
It gets worse, doesn't it?
Oh yeah, this is, this, this is full on, like, he's, my, I paused it here because he's calling someone else a coward. While, while he balls on TikTok.
He, his teeth look like they can fucking cut keys.
Yeah.
His mommy, I think, is telling him to calm down.
I wanna go back in time and show this shit like this, all those fucking smug. Maga heads laughing at the girl screaming at the sky, or the trigger memes, like, we, we would never be like that. Yeah, yeah, you would.
Um, yeah, this guy is. What?
Dark Matter, does it ever bother you when you see people like this, they, they, they try to act like they give a fuck about servicemen? Only at certain times, you know what I mean, it just, it. To, to me, it just like kinda rose me the wrong way, like, you really don't give a fuck, you're just trying to show for other people.
Yeah, it's a form of, it's, it's their version of virtue signaling.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I have a feeling like, if Trump were still president. They'd have excuses, like, this is what they signed up for, they sacrificed themselves for our country and blah, blah, blah. I, I have a feeling it would be a different tune.
Yeah. I mean, kinda, but, but.
The outcome in Afghanistan would still be the same.
But, I mean, when Trump talked about, get, go get the vaccine or whatever at his last rally, or whatever, he got booed. Or one of his recent rallies or whatever, like. They, I don't know.
Yeah.
They, they are, he, this is what you ask for though, it's like the, we'll bring it back to Ian Miles Chong. You talk about like, go get the vaccine, but dude, you've literally like sculpted your audience to be like these anti-vaxxer nut jobs. So, you, you got all the anti-mask people, but now you say, well, but you can get the vaccine and they're like, fuck that. It's like, you fucking asked for it.
See, that's the thing, he should be able. That's the, he should be able to see it himself, cause he catches a lot of shit, what he actually says, go get the vaccine. He catches eight from his own people, he catches it.
I've, I've, I've seen him do, uh, you know, polls and it's almost like he's testing the water to see what his tweet should be like.
Yeah. Hey, I've got this idea that I stole from somebody about a tweet, so let me see if it'll work first.
Dude, his, his, is it his mom telling him to calm down here? Listen.
Probably.
Justin, calm down.
It is his mom.
Yeah.
He needs to talk with that, that, don't be a beta guy.
Oh my god. Don't upload that, honey, honey, don't upload that, please.
Why, yeah, he had to choose to upload this.
Yeah.
Like, what kind of, how does he perceive himself, like, when he's so misguided that he thinks uploading this is a good idea?
If you're willing to film yourself doing that in the first place, then like, you probably don't have the best judgment anyway.
Yeah. Jesus.
Um, alright, let's see, next. God, that was, yeah, that was embarrassing to say the least. I'm sorry, my eyes are watery. Uh, oh, guess who's back?
Back again.
Listen to me, I understand and let me speak now to the cameras.
Fuck.
Around the world, to every pastor that's watching this broadcast, to every Christian that is coward in your home. I realize that for this last year, that maybe you've been fed fear and fear and fear, but the Bible says. That God has not given us the spirit of fear, but a power and a love and a sound mind.
Look at him sweat, like a literal fucking pig.
He's got like the perfect cadence for a fucking preacher. Do they teach that?
Yeah, I was just talking, I was just thinking about that, like, if we were to talk to him like on our show. It would probably just be like the way we are now, just normal voice.
Normal dude.
Yeah, put him, put him up there on the stage, and all of a sudden, he gets like this, and he starts saying this, and he starts saying that. And he has to talk like this. It's why, why?
That wasn't Bad Dark Matter. You ever thought about a career in preachership?
No, no, now let's ask this question, you guys and, and chat. Did y'all ever wonder what happened to this guy? To be honest. Nobody gave a fuck about this dude after.
About fucking Starbucks coffee cups. And taking his gun inside to show him what's what, like dude, you fucking weird creep.
Well, what, what was his?
I made them say, I tricked you, I made them say Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Like, he thought that was such a great own.
And I brought my gun inside, they didn't stop me, cause I was concealed.
He caught a ration of shit from us.
All over the fucking cup. Because the cup, the Christmas cup was just like red with a green tree, right? And it didn't.
Red with snowflakes on it or some shit, like.
No, it wa, it was solid red and it had the Starbucks logo, that's all it was. And he was bitching because it didn't say Merry Christmas, but if you go to like years prior, because they changed the cup each year for Christmas time. Never said Merry Christmas on it.
Yeah, so.
He was, he was making it sound like it did say Merry Christmas on it.
He's creating controversy, that's what all these guys are good for. Creating fucking controversy.
Just outraged peddlers.
Ah, alright, let's continue.
You have a sound mind, you don't have to wear the mask, you got Jesus, you don't need the vaccine, you got Jesus.
Yeah, he puts an A at the end of everything.
You don't need the mask, you got Jesus.
Yeah.
It's like the James Hetfield of preaching.
If you don't need the mask.
Dark Matter does not get that joke. He doesn't, Dark Matter didn't get the James Hetfield joke.
I didn't think you did either, that's why I just moved on from it.
No, I, I, I got it. James Hetfield is a singer for Metallica and he likes.
They're singing for Metallica, yeah, that's why, that's what I was just about to say.
After, after each line and every verse ends with a ah.
Yeah. It's, it's, uh, yeah. Master of puppets, uh. The puppets are pulling your strings.
If he's saying you don't need the mask, you don't need the vaccine because you got Jesus. Are, are, is everyone except Christians dying? That's what I wanna, that's what I wanna know, cause, I mean. Wouldn't that kind of fuck up your whole argument, like, you know, basic facts?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry, guys. Told you, forgive, in the beginning of the show, forgive me.
I looked in the cupboard and I saw a twinkie and I said, Lord, I need three twinkies. And lo and behold, there were three twinkies.
And I consumed them all. I did not share.
I went to an MMA fighter and I stood up and I told him to twist his dick.
Yes. Alright, let's, uh, let's do, uh, we'll go back to the City Hall anti-maskers, just for some shits and giggles, I got one more here.
My name is Melissa, I have two daughters in the school system. These are demonic entities and we need to stick together, remember, we have authority in Christ Jesus. These are demonic entities and all the school boards of all the United States of America. And all of us Christians will be sticking together to take them all out. All the police officers that kick us out for our First Amendment right will also be going down with them, do you understand?
Do you? Do you understand?
Demonic entities. No, do not.
What?
Some fat guy said she's a hottie, you don't wanna stick your dick in that and create more.
Yeah.
Demon spawn ironically, no. This lady does not need to be continuing her procreation activities.
She's got two easy daughters that are gonna, yeah.
Really?
I'm a nurse, infectious disease thirteen years.
She's an infectious diseases nurse?
No, she's not.
It doesn't make sense.
Let me hear that.
No.
I'm a nurse, infectious disease thirteen years. Masks don't work, these doctors that sit up here that were sneering at us, looking at us like we're scumbags. They need to go back to fucking medical school.
You're out of order, please, this is your last warning. Communications.
Turn my mic on. I'll say fuck whatever.
You work for me.
Mm-hmm.
Another one of those.
You fucking plebs.
They need to remember, natural immunity is best, you are all demonic.
If natural immunity is best, then why, like, how do we get rid of polio in the US and, and?
I, why is she even a fucking nurse then? Like, what is?
Right, yeah.
Your natural immunity is best.
Yeah, your job is.
She's, she's probably some homeopathic, like, oh, just take some cinnamon for it, you got cancer, take some cinnamon.
If I'm in the ER and I hear a nurse talking about something, being a demonic entity, I'm getting up and I'm getting the fuck out of there.
Yeah, I'm like, not, not that one, don't.
Like, you're in there because your legs have been decapitated, you're getting up anyway, fuck it.
Your legs, your legs.
I'm finding a way out, yeah.
Wait a second, your legs have been decapitated?
You know what I mean? I didn't say that.
You totally fucking did say that.
Amputated.
Decapitate my legs, how does that work?
Amputated is, is just straight up, but decapitated is now caffeine, I know what I'm talking about.
You have to have your head up your ass in order for that to work. Ah, alright, um.
You've already had your first warning and this is your last, she cannot speak anymore. The following individuals, please line up.
Yeah.
My name is Melissa.
That, so, the, the, you're not allowed to speak anymore, did you think that was gonna stop her? Just like fucking Dreads guy. Like, you're, you're not talking to people who understand logic and rules here and it's, they're just, they're too far fucking gone.
That's why I like seeing some of these, they'll actually cut the mic before removing her, then, and that's what pisses them off the most.
Fuck yeah, they started yelling real loud.
What if, what if a guy named Mike goes up there and he's like. Uh, you know, pack carrying, he's like concealed carry and they say cut the mic and then like he, he thinks it's self-defense, he starts blasting because, you know.
That's worse than my joke about working at a restaurant and when they ask for hands, like, to run food. Like, can I get, can I get one hand? And, and, I'm like, bro, if we had an amputee working here. He'd be like, yo, my name's Jeff, okay, stop calling me one hand. It's, it's a terrible joke.
That's far worse than my cut the mic joke.
No, it's not, like, look, 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 if you wanna know how bad your joke is, you look at this face. Right here. That's the one that tells you how bad your.
I see a smiling Jack Sparrow, what's that, that's the exact response I want from my jokes.
Your joke was obviously fantastic then. No, I, I heard a, a little bit of a sigh there. No? I, I heard a, a little bit of a sigh there. I gotta say, it's, uh, it's been fun so far. Let's see if we can keep it that way. Let's do, uh, you wanna do, uh, oh, this is kind of a not super stupid, but I'm wondering why they did it? So we'll play it real quick. It was in China. I'll start it over for you.
They always gotta outdo everything, even our nine elevens.
Dude, look at all these fucking buildings.
Demolition at once.
Do you think they have a conspiracy theory that it was invisible jets that knocked down all those planes? All those buildings?
Uh, look, there's building seven in the background.
Dude, here's the thing. Do, do you guys see what went wrong here?
No.
Okay, watch it one more time and tell me what goes wrong in this demolition.
There, there's one that doesn't fall.
Yeah, keep watching.
One right in the middle.
Oh, one in the distance.
Takes, and he starts taking another one though.
Like, where they was not supposed to go?
I'm pretty sure, my, the thing I was pointing out is the building in the middle that does not fall. It, it does get blown up. If you watch from the beginning, the, the detonation goes off. It drops and then it stands. Watch. Boom, it drops and then stands. It drops about five floors.
Yeah, that's the building you wanna stay in. As long as you're not living on the first few floors.
Yeah, well, I, the point is that when they try and demolish a building and it doesn't come down, it stands like that, it's extremely fucking dangerous to try and finish the goddamn job. Like, that's fucking wild.
Like, I'm wondering what went wrong here? Like, why did they need to do this? Like?
Oh, it's, uh, it's communism. If this was America, they wouldn't have.
Clear out that whole section.
They wouldn't have added, yeah, exactly. They have plans to redo this. This is probably a very important part of the, the, you know, whatever city.
Say, say if this is Japan, you don't have much room to build. So you have to, you, you can't expand. So you have to knock shit down and?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure this is China. And so they have plenty of room, but the thing is it might be like a spot, eh, like I said, it's, it's a spot where they have something else planned. And they're like, well, if we wanna do this in this spot, we gotta get rid of these shitty old buildings that we built with our shitty ass communism.
It's, it still might be the space, yeah, cause there's mountains right there and they, you know, can't build them on.
It's waterfront. There's, there's a passage right there. For all we know, they're, they're gonna, you know, put some kind of fucking little, uh, port of industry or something in there. Who the fuck knows? But it's not something you see every day. And like Dark Matter said, uh, nine eleven joke.
I made several nine eleven jokes, TJ.
Can you continue to make them?
It's twenty years. It's twenty years. We, we paid our dues, okay?
By the way, you have to call it fricking, uh, nine, you know, E L E V E N to avoid the algorithm on YouTube. You can't, you, you have to spell it out like it's a child because if you say it and their, their algorithm picks up on it, we're fucked.
Do you know the plane where those, uh, people were falling off of that, you know, was taking off from Afghanistan? Had nine eleven on, on the nose, on, on the number on its nose?
Really?
And, uh, I just found it interesting that, that, that war started the same way it ended, you know, with people falling from the sky. Not a joke or anything. I'm just saying, it's like, it's like reality kind of rhymed there. It's, it's George Lucas. It's, it's poetic. It rhymes. Yeah.
The fuck is wrong with you, bro?
I see, I wasn't making a joke out of it, but your like bored faces forced me to kind of turn it into entertainment.
Here, this is, this is.
Look, I only say this as someone who has jumped out of an airplane before, okay? I get to say it.
Alright, look, uh, this is entertainment, Dark Matter. Take, take notes. Alright.
Danny, walk away, Danny. You walk away, Danny. Walk away. Walk away. Get the fuck out of here, people. Get the fuck away. He's attacking. Blondies attacking. The blondos attacking. Fuck out of here. Fuck you.
You caught it a whole bunch of people. Get the fuck away.
Hey, let them. Stop it. Hey, leave me alone. Leave me alone. Hey, leave me the fuck alone. Hey.
How many, like, tall blondes in black are at this place?
I don't know, but.
My first thought was it's gotta be family of yours.
He's just coming out of the woodwork.
We're not blonde around here, alright, sir?
You guys are extremely fucking tall.
I mean, look at the, dude, look at the fucking size of the, Jesus Christ.
That's, well, gotta be some sort of relation.
That is, that is a sassy squash if I've ever seen one.
That's, you know what, Dark Matter? I fucking hate you for getting there before I did. Look at this. Look at, look at, this cat is not amused. Not amused. Said, look, you son of a bitch. Stop watching the Amazons in the parking lot fight and pet me.
The parking lot, the parking lot broads, yeah.
With the heels and everything, she looks to be about seven feet.
Dude, this one, yeah, she's. Dude, she's shit.
Stop. You guys stop.
Rob, rob the fuck out.
Unless.
Fuck away.
Don't touch me. You touched me.
He's fucking filming the whole fucking thing.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, that's what happens when you act like an animal in the parking lot in the middle of the night. People are gonna film you.
People are looking for reasons to film you.
Yeah, you.
And you gave it to them.
You didn't even need a reason really. Like, there's probably some creep out there trying to film you anyway.
Yeah. Hell, and you're in a parking lot. There's probably ten cameras on you already.
Dude, like, a, a group of six foot blondes dressed like somewhat scantily, it doesn't take much to get the creeps out and you're doing it. They, they, the creeps come out for totally normal, not fucking, you know, like just average women. They're everywhere. Have you seen the, the creeps freaking out because Abby Shapiro, uh, Ben Shapiro's sister did like a cooking, a recipe thing and she had a picture where she's not wearing shoe, like any, anything on her feet in the pic, in the kitchen? And like the entire fucking comment section is like, I'm coming to those feet right now. Oh, fuck, yeah. Like, like it's fucking, you know, learn to crop or learn your audience or learn what the internet is.
She's got a nice rack herself and they're worried about her feet.
Dude, people are weird.
Like she's, she's doing the whole literal barefoot in the kitchen thing.
Just not pregnant.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe we could do something about that, man.
Why would you say that, Dark Matter?
You know, you know what?
The goddamn podcast has no affiliation with Dark Matter twenty-five twenty-five.
I'm conflicted, I'm conflicted with, with her because she would be prettier if Ben didn't exist, but every time I look at her face, I see Ben. So I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be able to do it. No.
You don't find too many, you don't find too many women that are taller than their brothers.
Ben Shapiro with slightly larger breasts and a slightly smaller penis. That's Abby Shapiro. Jesus, yeah, alright.
Or you can be like the guy who filmed this who's got a thing for like shield maidens.
Look at how fucking.
Shield.
Leave me alone. Leave me alone.
These, these, these are the tanks. Guy. Dude, this one.
I mean, look at that one stomping up in.
Stomping. Look at how much fucking, dude.
It's like that Resident Evil broad. You ever seen that?
Let's be honest, if this was Dark Matter, he would be screaming, leave me alone too. Leave me alone, please, please. I promise I didn't mean nothing by it.
Yeah, and the reason they would be coming after me is because they just can't leave me alone, TJ. They want it. They need it.
And you'll hear one of these chicks go, twist his dick.
Give me the old dick twist.
That's when I'd give him the old thrust and welcome it. I don't know. Never, I don't, shut up. So, why do you make me say stupid shit like that?
I don't make you do anything, Dark Matter, but I appreciate you doing it anyway. Um, let's do, uh.
I, I liked how that guy kept yelling, stop. Like, I heard him yell, stop, 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 like six times. And I'm thinking to myself, wait, wait, like, maybe on the sixth time, they'll be like, oh, oh, stop? Oh, okay. Why didn't you say so? Like?
Didn't hear, didn't hear you the first five times. Sorry.
Alright, this is, uh, this happened in the Miami airport.
Oh, this fucking guy.
Dude, even, I believe this is, I believe this is his girlfriend in the middle of the frame right now. That, and, and I, okay, so the backstory from what I've heard is that he was in a big verbal, uh, altercation with his girlfriend. She tried to go in like the women's bathroom to get away from him and he followed her in there. And then, um, like the, this was right next to the gate that they were supposed to be leaving from and so they all witnessed it and they wouldn't let him get on the plane. I guess he may have took, taken it as it's because he wasn't wearing a mask and that's why? Like, they weren't letting him on the plane, but it wasn't that at all. But you can even see her flinch when he swings at this dude. Like, yeah, she goes, she thought he was gonna do it.
And that ain't the only time either.
Wow. He was actually calling people, dude? Wow. Where's the police?
This is all about like, uh, gorilla showboating, like trying to display aggression and force, but too chicken shit to actually do something. It's all just an intimidation tactic.
Play roid rage, really.
Have you both seen this?
Yeah.
Huh? Dark, or Grant, you haven't?
No.
Wait till he actually throws a punch. Um, here he makes it look like he's gonna take this, yeah, I don't know what the fuck they call these things. A little thing to hold the line or the, the string to make the line. Uh, he makes it like, look like he's gonna throw it at him, but then he throws it somewhere else.
Oh my god.
Like total disregard for complete strangers.
Yeah, other people, other people are just walking by. Yeah, this is, and, and here's the, the kicker. Apparently he's a vet. And when they came, they, they, he was a vet in crisis and they just took him to the hospital. So apparently, like, I, I don't know how you guys feel about that. Is there, is there just an open, like, excuse? For people to act like this because they've served?
No.
Uh, shouldn't be.
No.
In fact, he should know better.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. If he's a serviceman, he should know better to, to act in public.
Absolutely. And here's my thing. I think we should have better, like, VA benefits and shit. Uh, that, that would, I think, do a lot, like, better than just waiting for them to explode and then, then taking them to the hospital. That, that seems like a real waste of fucking, uh, a, a way to go about shit.
On the other side, a lot of times you don't see that, really.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, if this is tru, if this, if, if, what this, what he said was true, then, you know, he could have been fine. And it just takes one little thing to set it off and that's if this is true, but I don't, I don't buy it in this particular case.
Like, I've heard of cases where, you know, someone heard a car backfire or something and then they take cover in, under their car or something. Like there's a sniper and like that's totally different than just getting all aggressive on civilians and like screaming and showboating and acting like a gorilla.
Alright, alright, this video is almost over.
Jesus.
He's about to throw his first and only puncher. Falls on his ass. And this, uh, as Dark Matter pointed out, it's a gang of bald guys.
Yeah, three balds. Closing in. Boom, boom, boom. Lot of cute, lot of cute balls coming at you.
There's three of them right there out of the four.
Yeah, and one haired brother from another mother who isn't afraid to get into the mix with his bald brethren, TJ.
Yeah.
He's an ally. He's not like you who constantly demeans me for an in, intrinsic trait.
Oh, you're proud of it. That's what I hate about you, Dark Matter.
Intrinsic? You don't have to be a douchebag.
Yeah, yeah, use a different word that I understand. Dude, Keanu, they're fucking Pringles. Get the fuck out of here. Have you seen? He's relentless. I've got like two Pringles sitting in front of me. I've, I've not been eating for shit. Like I said, I'm like, my head is all fucked up right now. I'm like, my emotions are all fucked up and I'm, I'm like depressed and I'm making myself eat something because I've not eaten at all. My stomach is like screaming at me. And I'm, I've got like fucking two goddamn Pringles sitting in front of me and this fucker has made like seven passes at them.
Would Keanu actually eat chips?
Absolutely. This cat will eat anything. He, he broken, he broke into a fucking pack of pork rinds, ate the whole thing and then barfed it up on my carpet.
I've got a, I've got a cat that you can't open up a bag of chips around him. Soon as he hear, soon as he hears the rustling of the bag, he's right there. And it, and he'll, you, you handle one, he'll, he'll fucking bite at it and carry it off and eat it.
See, see, my one, the one cat I had, she would either eat her cat food or lunch meat. That's it. Like, you couldn't, that's, you know, she wouldn't eat anything else. But like apparently, Lisa had a cat when she was a teenager that, I, I, I think she told you guys this story before, that wouldn't eat nothing but cheeseburgers. She had to, if the cat would not eat unless she went out and got it cheeseburgers or made cheeseburgers.
It had to have cheese on it?
Yeah.
It's crazy, man.
Like, how would this cat survive in the wild if it?
It wouldn't.
Didn't have people.
You know, they always say that, you know, cats are finicky eaters. I've never had a finicky eating cat. If it's, it food that they can smell from, you know, across the room or whatever, they're, they're right there. They want it too.
Like, yeah, like, um, Amanda says her, her dog, which I call my dog because he's adorable, so he just becomes mine by default, um, loves broccoli. Like, what the hell? Why? This, that's against nature.
Chibi will eat like everything but popcorn.
Fuck, why?
It's just this, like weird, like, yep, nope, I'm not about that. I swear to God, like, he, he won't eat a piece of celery, but if it's got a, like tiny bit of ranch on it, he's gnawing on it. He's such a weird dog.
We're cre, we're creating this, these spoiled, we're turning these species into spoiled, unstrung.
Yeah, before you know it, they won't even drink toilet water. They're just gonna drink the Sami, which is almost the same thing.
They're, they're gonna take over. Just give them a little bit more time.
Oh, Jesus.
They'll eat our faces off and, you know, they'll, they'll rule the world.
Uh, that was, that was this video, like, that, that one went pretty viral. I, uh, I mean, we'll get into our last nerve here in a minute. We might do a double feature, but I, I wanted to, before we get there, thank you guys again for, you know, being patient with me and, you know, be, be in there for me. I, I just, I'm, I, I'm having a rough go right now, uh, all around and it's, I don't know.
It's, it's worth it that the show will get more popular because of it, since you've gone viral. It's, it's worth it that the show will get more popular because of it, since you've gone viral.
I honestly, the, the drunken peasants probably has more of a positive effect. Uh, being, being guests on there has more of a positive effect on the show than anything because we, we tend to, uh, grab a few subs every time we're on. Uh, and, and, and those, yeah, those, they, they regret it now. They're like, oh my God. Dark matter? And then they watch fucking 10 minutes of this shit and like, oh. And then they watch 10 minutes more and they're like, man, I hate this guy.
Cause they're like jealous that I'm holding everything together. Yeah, I know.
Sure.
It's all right. I make it look effortless, but I mean.
Right now, dark matter, you, you might, you might be the one of the, you'll be the one of us that is actually holding everything together.
You'll definitely have a problem when like next week and I'm not here, people are gonna ask about me. That's when you know something's up.
Yeah. Oh God, if people start asking about Grant.
You might as well just call it at that point.
Yeah, we gotta, there's a point where you just say. All right, let's, uh, let's try and wrap this shit up here. Uh, we, I guess we could do a twofer. If we pick the right ones here. Um, we've got, oh, that's a good one. And then, uh. Okay, we'll, we'll start with this one. It's an old school, uh, right wing watch, not old school, but a newer one, but. We haven't used right wing watch in a while.
Fauci is now pointing the finger at the unvaccinated people, saying they're the ones causing this outbreak. Well, it's the vaccinated people who are getting infected. Aren't they causing the outbreak? You've got people who are.
How does he? How did that like compute in his head? How did that?
Just like, I, there's so many fucking people out there living in a completely altered reality.
It's called a vaccination. It's not called a cure.
Yeah. But they, they don't, they, these are the people that don't understand fricking like, uh, you know, what a sci- the scientific theory is. Like it's just a theory. Like they just, they, they don't want, they don't wanna know, man.
Who are shedding the virus, infecting other people, walking around thinking they are protected. And yet they are the ones who are spreading the virus to other people.
But are they dying from it? Even if, even if he's correct here, are they the ones dying from it or is it the unvaccinated dying from it?
And yet Fauci is going to blame the unvaccinated. For this current surge that's taking place. I don't think that there is a variant called Delta. I think it's a name that they gave. The public to explain the explosion of infections caused by the infect, by the vaccinated people.
Well, sorry, it's the gaslight variant, if anything.
I'm sorry, you, my, my, I think it's my Skype that's like cutting, cutting in and out right now. Are you guys still getting a smooth feed?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What to call them? Drugs, the drugs.
Like I'm getting kind of a, it's choppy in dark matter.
Yeah.
Are, they're not experimental drugs. I used to say that. The drugs are doing exactly what they were designed to do.
The kill shots.
Satanic serum.
There you go.
Kill shots, satanic serums.
Satanic serum.
I like, I love how it's always true, 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 true news. Like it's always so fucking ironic.
Uh, these guys, these guys got called out by Mike Lindell, apparently. Cause they, they, they didn't follow his complete bullshit line, uh, and believe everything he said. So now they're Antifa.
And it was the one time like Rick Wild said anything even close to sane. When he was like, this makes me kinda wonder if other things he said aren't true. Like, oh yeah, you're close dude, keep going.
Uh, Stephen James had a $2 super chat asking, how did I lose my moderator status from last week? I just, uh, because I quickly moderated a couple of people just because we were having, uh, issues with trolls. Wasn't, wasn't necessarily meant to be a, uh. Full, long-term thing. I, I like to keep the moderators. In short supply, I guess you could say. Like if needed, I'll mod people, but I, it's not something I go do like, and don't take it like personally or anything. It's not like. I didn't, I didn't mod you because I liked you a lot and I didn't unmod you because I didn't like you a lot. It's just, it was a, uh, convenience thing at the moment. So it's, it's nothing personal, man. Like, and, and you're not missing out on anything. Cause if. If you had gone and, and used your mod status to do anything but keep trolls in check, I would have taken it away anyway. So.
Yeah, uh, to, to add on to that, there was, uh, we had a vegan roll up in the chat one time. I went to ban him and I got yelled at for it. So. Moderator status really doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all about everybody being able to say whatever the fuck they wanna say as long as it's not, like, we got spammed really hard in the chat.
That was like the only time.
Yeah, and, and, and that's when I made a couple of extra mods. I literally just chose like the last two people that had commented. And made them mods and so that they could help me, uh, you know, get rid of this person. That's basically.
TJ allowing like, like, like complete and total asshole comments. Everything except for like, like debilitating spam. Is, and like just, it just baffles me that he would ever get an argument like. Oh, well, this is the censorship you wanted. Like, like he's been like always so exact opposite of that. It just. I just can't get over that.
Yeah, I've, I, I've literally was known before the podcast when I used to just stream. I, I was a troll reformer. Like I would literally, literally let trolls tucker themselves out and watch my stream for long enough until they just got involved normally.
That, that was a long time ago.
And, but I've, I've never.
You're not getting that now.
No, and, and I don't, I just don't, like it, it doesn't, I don't know.
Like, there's no reforming of trolls now. That's what people do.
Yeah, and I don't, like, I've never been one for drama. Like I really fucking can't stand bringing that, like, in, even in my personal life, but especially on my fucking like, you know. YouTube, like personas or channels or whatever. It's not, it's never been like, I, I really hate the drama. It's occasionally fun to talk about. First time we were on drunken peasants, we talked about, uh, Joe. For a little while, but that's because they had a clip lined up and it was fun, you know, whatever. It's, again, no like hard feelings about any of that shit. Um, but I don't know, man, people, people get really wrapped up in butthurt about this shit and I just don't have the fucking like. The time for it. I guess I've got the patience. If you wanna tucker yourself out, like. Trying to stalk me or, 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 you know, blast the, the chat, the podcast or like fucking have at it, man. You could, you could be spending your time doing a lot better things, um, like just being a fucking. Contributing fucking member of the chat. Like it works out just fine.
Why is it when you, every time you say Tucker themselves out, I, I see that, that meme of Tucker Carlson there. You know, that blank face.
Yeah.
Every time you say.
Well, you know, it's, it, it is, it's ironic, you know, cause I see, I see all these clowns in bow ties anyway.
I've only ever seen Tucker make that one confused face.
Yeah.
That's his, I'm, I'm really considering what you're saying face.
Uh.
That's, that's what it's meant to be. It looks like you're confusing the fuck out of me by using words.
Yeah.
Let's, let's hear if he gets back to explaining this satanic serum.
The kill shot.
It's the genocide. We're witnessing for the first time in human history, global genocide.
And when that doesn't happen, like years from now. This is all gonna be forgotten. Nobody's gonna, he's not gonna be held accountable. No one's gonna, he, he's not gonna have to answer for this bullshit.
But when we had the, when we had the death toll, you're rising, rising, not once think about a genocide or anything like.
Right, right. Like six hundred and thirty thousand.
Mind at that point.
Yeah, or what is it? Four and a half million people around the world died of a disease. But when we come up with a fucking vaccine, that's the genocide.
You know, it, it, Trump missed out on something big here, cause he could have, instead of doing. Fucking from the office or from the desk of Donald J. Trump or wherever the fucking website was, he could have just done Trump news. And when people put in TRU like news, it would have popped up next to it and he would have auto automatically got half the audience that he needed. Just by like adding MP to their true news. It's, uh, whatever. Is what Trump is known for.
Uh, it's funny that true is, is spelled wrong, you know, so it's like not true.
Yeah.
It's like.
We're, we're lucky they put the E in news and it's not just true news. Like, they, they just, they don't, they don't fucking care, man.
Compliments of the Church of Satan. The Communist Party is the political arm of the Church of Satan.
The what party? Democrat?
Communist.
Oh communist. Oh, well, same thing.
These people that are running the world are, are Satanists. They're, they're killing off massive numbers of people.
It's his own fucking people that are dying from this, by the way. Like the anti-vaxers and the fucking conservatives and the older generation and like they, they, they're the ones that are at most risk. Their fucking voting base. The people that support them and they are fucking ki- literally killing them.
Where is this satanic church? By the way, I wanna start, I wanna start worshiping.
Oh, the, uh, the, the, where you worship, it's called patreon.com slash goddamn.
Hey, if, if you guys haven't already, follow the Church of Satan on Twitter. Whoever runs that fucking page is fucking hilarious.
Uh, I will, as soon as I'm able to do anything on Twitter.
Yeah, it, it's, it, it's, it's hilarious just watching, I, I don't know who it is that runs it, but it's like, he's, he's got the right frame of mind. Of just how to, how to do his own type of trolling. Like somebody will bring up Church of Satan like this and he'll show up, you know?
It's doing exactly what it was created to do. And, you know, this was their plan all along. It's to shame the unvaccinated people into thinking that you're killing. These other people, but really it's the truth. It's the vaccinated seem to be carrying. Uh, whatever this bio weapon is that they're unleashing on all of us. I mean, you went a whole year. I shook 10,000 hands last year on the campaign trail.
A vaccine is now, yeah, the bio weapon.
Funded, funded by Trump.
This is, this is absolute proof that no matter what kind of like. Literal, like visual facts that these people can see for themselves, they will flip it and turn it.
They will dick twist anything. To just make it sound obnoxious.
Give it, give it the old dick twist.
I, I mean, she could, I, I'd let her put my dick in a vagina chokehold if she wanted to, I mean, that.
Dude, we, we just talked about not sticking your dick in crazy.
Yeah, yeah, that is true. It's such a shame though.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess it happens.
Uh, didn't catch it. You didn't catch it all last year. Wasn't until people started getting vaccinated, people started getting really sick.
Well, what's the count again, dark matter? What's that world count again?
Four and a half million people.
They weren't getting sick. It's only after.
The vaccine didn't show up until 2021. Like all, all those people that died in 2020.
Don't mean shit.
Duh. That, but see, that doesn't help her argument. So it's not worth talking about. It's worth fucking twisting and. Giving it the old dick twist until it matches exactly what you need.
So, um.
And I'm convinced that. My infection and the, the explosion that we had here in our staff, among my family and friends, twenty some people altogether infected.
Hey, don't tell Mrs. DM, I mean, she says she's sound asleep right now. Don't disturb her sleep.
He had it, he had it run through, I'm guessing his, his, his company here. Twenty people got sick.
Yeah, he was, he was infected and then got everyone else there sick.
What a piece of shit.
Actually, I believe it was Milo that they blamed it on. They had Milo in the studio and then.
Yeah, yeah. And they blamed it on him. I, I love how the.
Because even though he's not gay anymore, he's, he's, he's a, he's a prime carrier of this stuff, right?
That and the AIDS.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. How about a little personal responsibility dipshit?
Nope, they, they only.
People that will bitch about personal responsibility.
That's only for other people, not for themselves.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, you're right.
Believe it came from a vaccinated person coming into this building.
Oh, it was a vaccinated person that spread the disease.
Fuck out of here. How did they? I don't see how you can warp your mind into saying, yeah, that was it.
Oh, it's, it's easy when you don't wanna believe any of the like facts or truth and you want so badly to coddle. Your, your already pre- preconceived notions. I'm sorry, that's two, that's two big words in a row. Preconceived and notions. That means. The stuff you already done believed.
So you're a double douchebag for those words?
I guess. Man, I feel like a double douchebag. All right, fuck you douchebag. This guy should feel like a douchebag. He's. God, wow, what a fuck.
Yeah, that, that's.
All right, this is gonna be our last, last nerve here. Uh, it's our old buddy.
Anyway. I had a little sing- little red single engine, uh, Cessna, a Skylane. And first airplane the ministry ever had. So, and, and.
Oh, he, he's gonna make much more of a point than that. All right, so he had a little si- single engine Cessna.
So, and, and, and Carolyn's dad was in the car with me, Olin Creach. And we were driving back out, I've forgotten now. Exactly where we were going. I saw that little brown Cessna three ten fly over and the Lord said, that's your airplane. Wow. So.
What a douchebag. Jesus Christ.
You remember the, the part in the Bible where Jesus said like thou shalt have your Cessna?
I wish I could make believe this hard.
They, they just.
Avionics six forty.
Yeah, they just don't fucking care, dude.
And I, it was headed to the airport, so I headed to the airport. I got up then, I just saw it go in the hangar. So I, then I drove over there a- and I said, sir, is that your airplane? He said, no, it belongs to my boss. I said, is it for sale? He said, knowing my boss, everything's for sale. Amen.
A- amen. Everything's for sale. Amen.
Hey, just like Jesus said, TJ.
Yeah. Like that is literally the exact fucking opposite. Of the teachings of Jesus and, and he's got a crowd of people bobbing their fucking heads to this shit.
So, anyway, to make a long story short.
Yeah.
And, and being that it is, being that it's the ministry's plane, he doesn't have to pay taxes.
Ah.
Of course, yeah, there's no. It's all in the church's name to, to skip on taxes, man.
It's a good story, but I need it short. Um, I wound up with that little, that little brown three ten Cessna.
He, he basically cuts out the part where he fucking haggles on the price and tells you how much he paid for it.
Yep.
Oh. And I would go out and in those days, the airport was just a little ways from the house. And, and I'd just take my Bible and stuff and go out there and sit in that airplane and study. And, and the kids were small and that was, it was, you know, it was a getaway for me.
I literally needed to get away from my small children by sitting in an airplane and reading the Bible because. I thought God gave me an airplane. That's, that's what we're hearing right now.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I was out there one day and I pulled it out of the hangar. I'm polishing it and I'm telling you. I'm polishing it. Man, I'm telling you, just polishing it. And they.
You gotta polish the fuck out of your airplane that your ministry bought you. I mean, that's just common knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
By the way, this guy, uh, I don't know if he'll get to it, it, by the end of this clip, but he, he like as a jet. He's, this is the guy that talks about how he can't fly commercial because you're in a tube full of demons.
Mm-hmm. Let me hear that.
Was, uh, did he ever think about maybe polishing his tube? To get rid of the demons?
You know, that's what I do. The guy, the guy that, uh, that owned the plane before, you probably gave him a good dick twist to get that plane.
Yeah. By the way, a single engine Cessna is still incredibly fucking expensive.
Oh, absolutely.
Even, even like.
Yeah.
Like entry level airplanes are fucking incredibly expensive. And then, and then at the, he's talking about his first plane. At this, this point, he's got like a fucking Learjet or some shit. Which is like incredibly expensive to buy and then to maintain. No, you know, like a used fucking Learjet. Like, it's, it's fucking, yeah. It's a fucking ridiculous amount of money, man. Imagine all the people he could have helped.
Just fueling it, like,
if you just wanna fuel it and, and, and fly it, I mean.
Dude, they're spending like two grand just to fuel it.
The sitting in the hangar for a year maintenance is fucking astronomical.
Rent the hangar space.
Yeah. And then, and then a, a plane just can't sit there for a year without any kind of maintenance. Like it's, it's gotta fuck, like even just, and so, and then the maintenance on top, when you're actually fucking using it and flying around to places is fucking astronomical. And this motherfucker is, he's not even ashamed of it. He's bragging.
Yeah.
Came up there and they, they're both preacher, preacher boys, you know? Came up and said, brother Copeland, is that, is that the new airplane? I said, well, it's not new, but it's new to me. They said, oh, think about that. The Lord's airplane. I said, no, it isn't. Huh? I said, no, this doesn't belong to the Lord. He gave it to me. I dedicated it to him. But it's mine.
The Lord gave it to him. He literally bought it from somebody else using money people gave him, but the Lord gave it to him.
The Lord gave it to him and it's not the Lord's.
It's just, it, it shows you what he thinks of his congregation.
They are that dumb because they are that dumb. I guarantee you every one of these dumb motherfuckers has extended their auto warranty from some like dude, hello, my name is Mike. I'm here to extend your auto warranty. Like they, these are the people that buy that.
I mean, we all know the parts of the Bible where Jesus is like, this is mine. No, this is my fucking bling. God gave this to me and it's mine to keep and you can't have it.
God wanted me to have this gold chain or this diamond ring or this fucking Ferrari or like, it's so fucking and, and especially in the name of Jesus. Like you wanna make up another God that's like all about capitalism, fine, but in the name of Christianity and Jesus, like it is so obviously fucking like demonstrably against Jesus's teachings. It's the, the braggadocio part is fucking like the cherry on top, the chef kiss.
That's the thing. Nobody's gonna question that. Whenever he says that, no one's gonna question it because you question it, you'd look like a bad person.
What's the point? What's even the point of this sermon? Like what's the moral of the story?
He wanted, he wanted to brag. He, I'm, I'm pretty sure like, I, I wanna say that this turned into like him bragging about how he's, now he's got like a really nice jet and not just a single engine Cessna. And how God has kept blessing him.
One, one of those yachts that's so big, it has a support yacht.
Yeah.
Uh, this, I mean, anyone that still supports Kenneth Copeland is fucking, uh, an embarrassment and should be. It's like, like Jim Baker is bad, but Kenneth Copeland, Jim Baker is offering you fucking survival food. Kenneth Copeland is telling you, you done financed my next plane.
It, yeah, at least Ken, uh, Jim Baker is actually offering you something. You'll get something in hand, you know?
It'll probably kill you, but at least you're getting something.
Something.
All right. Uh, that's the show, guys. I, uh.
He's over, he's, he's done tagging?
Uh, yeah, I believe that's the very end of it. That's the very last one. There you go. Okay, that was worth it.
Look at that fucking face. You talk about somebody that looks demonic, you know? Look at that.
Jesus. All right, uh, that's, that's the show, guys. I'll leave that up on, uh, on screen. Why not? Um, I, I really appreciate you guys, uh, showing up. Uh, Grant, really a big thank you for the last minute, uh, showing up. It's made a huge difference. You guys helped me to, uh, forget about how fucking depressed I am right now for a little while and I appreciate that. Uh, again, apologies, uh, that I'm, I'm not my normal self right now, uh, to everyone. Um, I hope you enjoyed the show. Like I said, I, I almost just fucking canceled it. So I, I decided to, like, since we had that strike and missed just a couple of weeks ago, I didn't wanna miss another one. But you guys are fantastic and I love you, uh, very much. I appreciate your, your viewership and, uh, your, your continued support really means a lot to us. So, uh, thank you again. Uh, give us a big fat thumbs up if you made it this far. Uh, we always appreciate that. And, uh, we will see you beautiful motherfuckers. Uh, um, last reminder, do check out, uh, Drunken Peasants, uh, episode nine, twenty four. I wanna say it was their, their last episode from last night. Do check us out on that. It was a lot of fun. Uh, and give them some love over, over there.
And, and, and I, I liked having Grant on too. It's.
Absolutely. Uh, I, I wanna have the ginger on sometime soon as well. Uh, I wanna spread the love, but Grant, you're always welcome here on the podcast, man. And, and, uh,
Right on.
Any, any Tuesday night at about nine 30, check your, check your Twitter messages and see if I'm begging you to be on because you're, you're, uh, you're always fantastic, man. Uh, the best thing, best thing Joe ever did was introduce me to your, uh, your awesome ass. So, uh, anyway, love you guys very much. Uh, thank you for sticking around. Thank you for, uh, kind of being my, my little release for a few hours. Um, I'll be all right and, uh, I, I really, really do love you guys. So thank you guys very much for tuning in. Do check us out if you haven't already, patreon.com slash goddamn. We could always use the support. Uh, drop that thumbs up if you haven't already. Uh, we love you guys and we'll see you next Tuesday.
Good night.
Night.